Here already?
Well, good morning. Yeah, I've been listening to your description of I'm assuming a little radio show.
Enter, yes.
Well, I leave my video off because apparently when I have my video on, people can't really hear me. So you guys just get my fancy picture of me in a field, apparently.
Okay, so we can either see you or hear you, but not both.
Why? You know, I'd say you could probably hear me. If you can see me, it'll be frozen, you know, jumpy, good stuff. We're still working on that rural broadband.
Yes, yeah. That's good.
So.
Go ahead.
Yeah, no, it's a it's a great setup. You know, keep working on it. You know, an interesting note, I my grandparents are actually moving right now. And I found an old lobbying binder from my grandpa, and this was from nineteen ninety-eight. And it was really interesting because I found a whole breakdown of fair funding and everything. And the weird part is these policy statements that they were advocating for back then are basically the exact same thing that we put out today. The a quick note to progress, I guess, right?
Yes, yes, I guess.
So it's a little bit demoralizing that that the legislature just doesn't listen all together, but you know, that happens. Speaking of not listening, I've got a really interesting bit of information for you guys as we go through this. I'll just kind of give you an overview here of a lot of the field. I mean, you guys know the bills that are happening and everything going on there, so. I'll just run you down a few things that have happened and and of course, you guys already know some of it, but there's a little bit of background that might be beneficial. So the first thing I'll start with is the Blake decision. And we're talking about, you know, the ruling from the Supreme Court here that basically said that if you were incarcerated for possession of an illicit drug or, you know, controlled substance, the Washington law was unconstitutional. So they're basically having to let a whole bunch of people out of jail or shorten sentences and things like that. Well, anytime you shorten a sentence, because a lot of these sentences were maybe lengthened or exacerbated by the fact that somebody had drugs on them. It's turning out that it looks like the state is going to be on the hook for a lot of those, the cost of that, a lot of those speeds. So what that's done is that's really given a lot of pause to the conversation around any of these judicial reform bills that they're going, well, hold on a second, you know, the state's on the hook for these. We don't have the money for this. At least what this has done has lent a little bit of reason to the conversation and and basically just kind of brought at least just a little bit of pace to this, you know, and what that by mean by that is, you know, they're banging their hands on the table, saying, you know, banging a fist on the table, go, we have to get this done. They go, well, we really want to get this done. We just got to figure out how to do it. So at least we have some reason in the conversation with that respect. That kind of carries over here into a lot of the criminal justice reform bills and conversation. A lot of those have slowed down partially because of the Blake decision and the fact that they realize that these things are costly and difficult to implement. But also because as we're seeing in, you know, cities like New York is a great example right now. They did a pretty broad sweeping defund the police in New York, and now they're seeing crime rates go up, violent crime go up, assaults go up. Everything is increasing in terms of crime, and they don't really know what to do about it. So it's a real world example they can point to and say, this is what happens when you defund the police. And so it's at least given a small voice of reason to the conversation. So well, maybe we better slow down and address these concerns. The other other thing that we're looking at, and we don't have a whole lot of time, so I'll move pretty quickly through these. The nine eight eight bill, which is House Bill fourteen seventy-seven. Nine eight eight number is the mental health number that's mandated by the federal government that has to be in place by middle of the year, June, July next year. And there's a big push to get this thing implemented here. The conversation and here in this year. And the conversation around that has really kind of taken on a little bit more of a reasonable tune because they're realizing that, I mean, they were trying to implement everything and put the people in place, and the call centers and the response teams and everything. And I think they're realizing that it's just not realistic to do that. And there's a real world question behind these nine eight eight numbers. And should they be considered an emergency number? And the example that's given on that is, let's say you have an individual who is standing on a bridge and threatening to jump. You know, yes, that is a mental health emergency. However, if the person jumps, there's going to be injuries or there's, you know, that you need to do traffic control. I mean, you gotta intervene. And the question arises, is nine eight eight the correct number to call in that situation? While it is, yes, a mental health emergency, you don't have access through the nine eight eight number because it has to be completely independent from any of your emergency services or dispatch or anything like that. You don't have access to emergency services. So is it a good idea to call a nine eight eight number, which could just be an impediment here, another step in the line while nine eight eight calls nine one one for you when seconds count? You know, so so that's a big question that's kind of being asked right now, and how does that work? So I guess my take on it is no matter what they do with the nine eight eight number this year, there's a lot of education to be done. There's a lot of infrastructure to put in place, and a lot of expenditures that need to be made. And no matter how they do that, they're going to come back next year and have to fix it. Now, there's really no way around it unless they just do a peer study bill this year, which they're not going to do. So it may end up where they do a study, and then you guys literally put like a rotary phone in the corner that nobody's going to call because nobody knows it exists. So we'll we'll see what that turns out to be. It's not, I mean, it could be a little bit costly, but there's, you know, the deadline is the middle of next year, so we've got some time. The other one is eleven fifty-two, which is the the health districts, you know, regional health districts. They're still messing around with your local board of health. We don't like that. Really what it comes down to very simply is like you as a board of commissioners. They're not adding, you know, construction workers. They're not adding home builders. They're not adding, you know, road pavers, all these things to your board of commissioners. Because the point of having a board is literally you guys get to make an informed decision. You don't have to know everything about everything. You just need to know where to find the information. And that's kind of the argument here. To maintain local control under eleven fifty-two, you don't need all these members from the community to sit on the board. And so there has been some conversation regarding, you know, maybe creating a like an advisory component to the board while not hamstringing the actual decision making of the board. That also comes in, you know, there's a legal question in there. If you have private citizens sitting on a board that could possibly make policy that would spend money or appropriate funds, technically, that's not legal because those people were appointed and not elected. And so there's a big question there. We really haven't heard much resolution on that. The other ones that we're really watching is thirteen thirty-two and fourteen ten. Those are the deferring your property taxes. You know, through the pandemic here. The clearly, the the issue with those is if you don't collect revenue before you have to pay revenue, speaking to bonds, which come due middle of the year, and you deferred your revenue to the end of the year. What are you supposed to do about that? And so the state's gonna have to be on the hook for that. If they're going to mandate the policy, they're going to have to fill that gap with something. They don't want to, and they don't really know how to. Which is interesting because the other little interesting piece of information that we just received yesterday. You know, and kind of confirmed to some extent. We know that there are federal dollars coming down, and Speaker Jenkins has been taking a very hard line towards, at the end of session, we are done. You know, a hundred and five days, we're out, and that comes on April twenty-fifth. Now, the conversation these days is, well, you know, we're going to get a couple billion dollars from the federal government. How do we spend that? We're not sure. We can figure out how to spend that before we get we get out in April. So, oh, man, we might have to have a special session. Completely contrary to what the speaker was trying to do, and and I don't know one way or the other if she's part of that conversation or not. But it definitely could put an interesting spin on things if they have to come back for a special session to try and figure out how to spend money, which I find kind of ironic that the state needs to figure out how to spend money. What we're really concerned about with that particular conversation, while it is somewhat hypocritical and and kind of funny. The big concern we have is a lot of these federal dollars oftentimes, and we don't know what the stimulus looks like yet in terms of what the state or the counties could get. The big concern with federal dollars is they obviously have a use it or lose it clause in them. That's that's one. So you gotta do something with it. Nobody likes to lose money. But number two, you can end up in a position where, you know, a lot of these federal dollars say that you have to create a new program. And that's the last thing we want to see is a new program that we have to put money for and a one-time capital infusion from the Fed. And that really puts us in a bind because, you know, maybe they fund it for a couple of years and, you know, there's limited funding. The finite funding with an infinite program. So basically, we're really hoping they don't go to a special session to try and figure this out. But that's really going to be kind of, I mean, most likely determined by what it really looks like when it comes down from the Fed and what those mandates around those dollars really are. You know, and so we just kind of have to watch. We really don't know. The other other questions that have come up, they're, you know, talking about the gas tax and carbon and all that good stuff. We're expecting some sort of a, I don't know, a package, a miracle package they're going to pull together. You know, that includes a carbon, social justice equity, also, you know, the gas tax, things like that. We don't know what's going to be included in that. We don't even know if that's going to happen. Part of the the benefit for us in that, I mean, I think we can all agree, we don't want to go to the pump and see, you know, five dollar a gallon gas again. You know, and then that's obviously being exacerbated by the the Fed's decision here as they ban fracking and things like that. Or oil production in the U.S. in general. So the good thing for us is the more things you try to put in that basket for, you know, kind of an all encompassing package, the harder it is to get everybody on board, and the more this is going to fall off, the higher the risk that it's going to fail. You know, with that, you know, that we're also looking at, you know, this is the first half of the biennium. There's a lot of conversation now going on, like, yeah, you know, if we don't get what we want this session, there is always next session because, you know, there's a lot to go through, and hopefully we'll be in person and all that good jazz. You know, I will see how much of that happens, but I do think that as we come into concurrence, you know, bills going back and forth. I think that it might be more than likely that a lot of these things that they just can't agree, rather than making a big compromise on it, they may just let it die and come back the next year. Because the bills do come back in the form that they left their house of origin. So that would deal with the concurrent issue, and they could redress it here next year, hopefully in person. So that's kind of the, you know, ten thousand foot overview here of what's going on on the legislature side. The email that I sent out, of course, has a list of interesting bills and things like that. You will notice, of course, that it is pretty anemic as you get through the end of tomorrow. There were many, many, many of the committee hearings that said, oh, well, you know, bills to be introduced to the committee. Basically, we don't know what we're going to do yet. As soon as we get the votes, we'll let you know. So as these things come up, you know, we'll, if anything of interest or, you know, anything you guys really need to be aware of, I'm sure WAC will make you aware, and I'll I'll kind of poke you too. The last thing I can say is, I know I've been pushing really hard on getting the the community involved and getting your constituency engaged with the legislative process. I have actually heard from several legislators that they are seeing a greater involvement from the rural communities and the county commissioners and just everybody in the rural areas. So they wanted to tell me to tell you thank you very much for the additional involvement and keep it up. And if there's one thing I can tell you, please, you know, share everything that you possibly can with your constituents, friends, family, everybody, and encourage them to get on TVW, get on the website, because this is the first year in the history of the legislature that they can actually comment on a bill from home. So very important they do that, and your efforts are not going unnoticed. So thank you for that. And with that, do you guys have any questions, comments, complaints?
Where would I begin?
Maybe I should have left the complaints off.
Yeah, yeah. Questions for Zach or comments? No? No, just keep it up. We're you know, we're just trying to keep our head above water for the rest of the session. And I agree with you. I think this is a kind of a unique year that I think you're going to see some non-compromise that they are just planning on. They'll just deal with it next year in this short session. Which will be interesting with their, you know, and they've only got sixty days. It makes it some ways it's more efficient. Sometimes I think they should only just have sixty days, period.
Yeah.
This is always a scary time of year for me. I can't wait for it to be over. I I'm so happy for over session more than I am for going on vacation.
Yeah.
At least I know what's going on. Yeah, what's going to happen.
Yeah, at least you don't have to worry about coming back to a disaster, right?
Yeah. Better the disaster you know than the one you fear.
Exactly. Okay, well. Yeah, the one you're thrust into.
Yes. Oh, all right, we'll we'll leave it there.
Absolutely. Well, you know, and as bills come up this week, I will, you know, if and when things come up this week, you know, into those committee hearings, anything of interest, we'll shoot out an email, let you guys know. And if there's anything you see that, you know, you specifically want to comment on, please do. Let me know as well, and we'll sign in, you know, specifically for your county as well. So just keep me posted. We'll be here.
Okay, thank you, sir.
All right. Thank you very much. You guys have a great day.
You as well. All right. Now, let's move on to, I see Public Works and Public Health was here prompt early today, so.
It's like fifteen minutes early. I don't know what I'm going to do.
No, no, we said, no, you're here exactly when you were, we were hoping. So we can start the conversation on the, you know, reopening the building and buildings, I guess we should say, with the change. Go ahead. Come on. See how many I have.
If you don't have enough, I can wait.
I think you guys got this electronically too.
Yeah.
I got lots.
Good loving compliance with the state of Nevada.
Everything else.
Thank you.
Later conversation. Wow, we're getting really specific about this reopening.
They might.
That was the two. Opening first?
Yes, please.
Okay. All right. So talked about handed out this Safe Start guidelines that we had last summer. We went back and updated as best Public Works can. There's probably some things about COVID that Aaron can probably help edit for us. But I think we've covered most things with this document, the reopening plan. And that's that first first packet. And then we talked about handed out a draft of this, which we kind of cleaned up the errors on for our door entry points. And then we also talked about limiting capacity in the waiting areas. So we've made up these signs for the doors outside each office.
Do they not say Nevada on them?
No, no. No, they don't. This one does.
Draft, draft.
When you said we made up these.
Yeah.
Guess we've just adopted the Nevada.
Yeah, no, this is an old one. And we try and use stuff that other people have taken the time to create.
Since reinventing the wheel.
Yeah.
I know I look at all your documents, and I think they look great.
So and Aaron probably has some ideas on, you know, the checks, symptom checks and the screening. So this is almost like a self-check screening for visitors. Right. Because each office has already developed a plan and have been doing the checks since we were required to start that and keep working since last year. So this is just for the public, and these are the the basic questions. I mean, it's similar when we went over next door to the building and the self-check-in we had to do there. And then we asked people not to come in if they answer yes to any of the questions that are on this list. And Aaron may have others, and we can add those if we need to. And then outside or when you enter the building, we'll have small tables with additional masks. We'll have the sign that requires you to wear a mask inside. And then another table or some of the offices already have a place designated where we'd have masks inside the waiting rooms themselves, additional ones if needed. And then I think the question is, what are we realistically, what do you do? What are we going to ask employees to do if somebody comes in without a mask?
Quick question, going back to your little sheet here. That says capacity at four.
Yeah.
Are you going to check with each department head slash official and downsize this number if they wish it to be downsized? Like if, let's say Brenda up there, if she can have four, but she really only wants two, I prefer to only do the two.
Yeah.
I want them to have some input on that number.
Yeah, so we'll start out with what the the building code says the capacity for that area based on what it's used for.
Right.
And that's kind of how we're starting. It's a good place to start.
Right. I just want to make sure they can have input to lower that number, the electants, if they choose to.
Sure. Yep.
Right, that's kind of the max.
That's the max. Yeah, right. So speaking of that, we will put a sign out here on this door.
What's that? What's our number?
Which will be the capacity. I had calculated it. It was twelve at twenty-five percent. And so it's probably maybe twenty.
Yeah, as far as the building.
No, for this room.
This room?
We're going to be more restricted by six foot.
Yes, right, exactly.
Yeah, because we can't measure six feet and get.
No, you can't get the maximum capacity.
Yeah.
Little paymarks on the floor.
Yeah, probably lay out some chairs that are meet that six foot requirement, and that's will be the capacity. Yes. And then we'll put a sign that goes with that.
Okay.
Unless you want less.
No, only, no, I won't say that out loud.
So we've done all the other things. Everybody has the the sneeze guards, and we have the hand sanitizer and common areas of all of our facilities that we've already ordered and been using for a long time. We've upgraded where we can, all the filters on all of our HVAC equipment to a high efficiency filter. I think it's Murders thirteen. And so we've done everything that we can to make the facility safe for the people that have been here working for months and the public who will come in.
Quick question for my staff person over here. If we have people in here, say we have ten or twenty or whatever number we have in here, when they go to make citizen comment, and this is for Jake as well. Do you think if they're sitting in their chair commenting, we're going to be able to hear them on that leg?
Yes.
Okay.
It's not like.
Yes. So we don't have to have them come to the table or develop some other mic thing. They could just sit there and talk if you want. All right, perfect. Thank you.
So one other item that's on here, and I don't know how how we're going to tackle this one, but it's the contact tracing. I think if we did a soft start, we talked about making appointments that makes it easier. You know, do we have some kind of sign in sheet or each office have something? You know, people pull out their name and their phone number. Is that enough? Yeah, so it's like a check in.
Can we put that? I was going to say, would that for like us, would that be something outside that they sign in before they walk in the door? Or is that something we should? I'm just thinking if somebody walks in late, we're not going to want to walk over there and make them sign in. So are you going to do these on the outside of the offices or on the inside of the offices? I guess is my question.
You know, probably in the offices where you have a waiting area, probably makes sense to do it there or when they actually come up to talk to somebody as another option.
That was my question of waiting here. I guess I'm thinking ahead. That if they're waiting up and say Brenda's area and decide not to go in and leave, if they didn't get inside the room, we don't have their info where we have the sign in sheet hall. At least we have the contact tracing when they were in the hall. So sorry, go back.
No, no, yeah, and that in this this room, it probably makes sense to have it outside the door.
But as far as for the building, as far as in his scenario, like somebody could come in, they could be hanging out in the hall, they're going up, they see how many people are waiting to get in to say the auditor's office, and they like, you know, I'll come back later. And then they leave. We have no record of that person, and that's the question. Is that acceptable or not? Or should we make the the sign in where we encourage people to sign in is just when we come into the building and then we, they say going to the auditor?
Yeah.
My recommendation would be that in the waiting areas or like in here, because now we're in here more than fifteen minutes. If I'm just walking through the hall.
That's true. It's not.
Less than fifteen minutes.
Yeah.
I don't care if he's in the hallway, just like walk him through. I care about who's sitting in here for more than fifteen minutes.
Right, okay, that makes sense to me.
If you walk into my office, we're going to want you to sign in.
Right.
Maybe you're not there for fifteen minutes. That's going to be your most exposure. There's other people in the waiting area.
Right. No, I like that idea because I think that's, I mean, and we do that now as far as we have a public hearing. We automatically get people to sign in. When people make public comment, we ask them, tell me your name and where you live. And that's just, you know, it's that's just part of the, you know, we're not doing it for COVID tracing, obviously, because it's virtual.
Yeah.
Now, we will be, but it's like, just, you know, and so I think we just have a signup sheet or something there.
I have one more that I was asked this morning. Are we going to clean our bathrooms in the courthouse more often than once a day now that we're allowing the public in? Or if we're wiping down desks, tables, everything else more often, we should probably clean our bathrooms more often. That was a request from somebody.
Yeah, we do do sanitizing more than, I mean, we do the cleaning, but we sanitize multiple times.
Yes.
So, yeah, we do that.
Yeah, because we seem like, yeah, we already.
We have.
We have a sort of enhanced sanitation is going on now.
Yes.
Already just for ourselves. Because we're mixing. Okay. Okay, what sounds?
You got it handled by.
And I would say, so what's our occupancy of the building going to be now? If we're at fifty percent for the building now, I mean.
Oh, no. We didn't cover. Right, I think so, something like that. Yeah, we'd have to look into.
Because that was the worst part that I looked at the governor's.
Yeah, it does not include.
Fifty percent, but that doesn't cover employees.
Yeah.
You know, you don't count employees.
So well, then we we have more than what we would normally have in the building.
It's a big number. If you're not counting employees, it's going to be a pretty big number.
Right, yeah. So that's what I, the point, I guess I was trying to bring out is that or earlier, you know, when we were twenty-five percent and we were going to be maybe twelve bodies in the building, that's in that, you know, according to the auditor, you can get twelve people waiting to go license. And so that number, we maybe needed to kind of keep track of. But if it's double that now, I don't see under normal circumstances that we would. It seems highly unlikely that we will exceed twenty-five people in the building or twenty-four people simultaneously on a regular basis. So to me, it's just like open the doors and it will kind of self, it'll self-regulate itself as far as I'm not, I guess if we get something, if we see that, and I would, I think that should be part of our guidance to electors and department heads. If you see something, it's no different than it always should be.
Right.
If there's a crowd of people, if there's fifty people crammed into the hallway, you probably need to tell somebody that we need to see about what's, number one, what's going on?
Right.
And, you know, cause it's still the capacity, there's, there's two limiting factors. It's that number and the distance from each other.
Right.
That hasn't changed and so it's.
Was, was your original numbers that you were thinking of the twelve and the twenty-five in the building? Was that based on occupancy, counting employees or not counting employees?
Counting employees, so.
So now that we're not counting employees, those numbers should be.
We're over a hundred people.
Yeah, right.
It goes way.
So we have no.
Yeah, so we have no issue.
No.
Just don't see that.
It's just gonna be in the CD or.
It's gonna be in the, the social distancing piece of it.
Or.
Whatever we're called, physical distance.
Yes.
We're not supposed to call it that now, for some, I guess that upsets people.
So, yeah, people watch.
Are you, are you upset, Aaron? Okay, good. You seem kind of hard to get upset. Yeah. Okay. So, so are we good? I mean, the plan was that we would, we would implement starting tomorrow. If we're ready, as far as our part of it, it's obviously gonna be up to, it's always gonna be up to electants as far as what they wanna do in their offices. I don't know if the, I know the auditor is not here today and was not, the admin is not available yesterday and today. And so, and Brenda told me that last Friday. So that, you know, and I don't know if, that's the only part I can see is a bit of a glitch because it is highly likely in my mind that the, the biggest user of services in this building is that office.
Always.
The public. And so I don't wanna send, I, uh, tell people, oh yeah, we're open for business coming in, cause I don't know that the auditor's office is gonna be open tomorrow. And so I think we need to either verify that or just.
Well.
We don't need to necessarily tell everybody we're doing everything until, let folks, until we know that.
I would think ideally, we would have the departments listed on a sheet on the door with the phone number. You know, something by appointment only, call these numbers so that not everybody's just coming in the building to try to get in the door. And they call first from the outside, cause that's where the phone number is and see if they can get in the door or make their appointment. But I personally wanna go on record absolutely right now. That my vote is to open the building tomorrow morning. Hopefully there's clarity with that. With my seatmates to make sure we get this open tomorrow and not push back again until next week.
So what, what's your point of even saying that? Isn't that what I just said?
Well, kind of.
I said it on Facebook and you wanted to say it in person too.
Okay. Okay, I just, I just wanna understand what the, I think we're talking about opening the courthouse tomorrow.
I thought.
That doesn't seem very unclarified.
I thought.
Didn't I say tomorrow?
I thought we were gonna open on Monday.
So tomorrow morning, at eight o'clock, the doors will be unlocked.
Right, and then I would just make sure, you know, it's up to each individual department as far as what they're comfortable with and they may, he, I, I don't know. They'll have to kind of figure that out. And we are talking about the annexes as well.
Yes. We'll take.
So the Pioneer Center in White Salmon will open. Barring any, uh, you know, some new piece of information, but I think that's what we should do and then, uh, you know, annex, uh, one, as far as building and, as you said, I think we're set. I mean, I think we're as ready as we're gonna be.
Yeah.
And. So just a logistical question, I guess, we should try to get this out as early as we can to the departments. Cause things like signup sheets, saying that, again, that's, we have them because we do that, but I don't, I doubt very seriously if the planning department has a signup sheet that they've got printed, ready to go. I mean, literally at eight o'clock tomorrow morning, but they could make one or we can, we could share some of ours.
We'll make one, cause we'll have to make one for ourselves and then.
Okay. Maybe make some, send some out as far as just a, just a, a, yeah, just a template for people.
Yeah.
They can modify it if they want to. And then, uh, I had offered two for department heads, if they have any questions and they wanna talk to the, the chair, I'll give them one guidance I can, but it's really gonna be up to them.
Yeah.
And, and any kind of, uh, either facilities questions, I'm gonna pass them on to you, a health question, I'll pass them on to the health director. I guess a legal question, I'll pass them on. Which there may be a couple. I did visit with the prosecutor at Lake yesterday, so I'm feeling as comfortable as I, any of us ever can be.
Right.
So, it's all about managing risk.
Yeah. So. If, if Brenda's in, you know, if she's available by phone, I'll call her.
Yeah, I, I think that would be good just to give her a heads up so that she can, um, cause my sense from her was that she was necessarily opposed to starting, but she didn't, definitely didn't want us doing anything before she was, before the administrators were in, they didn't, she didn't want us, you know, let's open on Monday. There's nobody in the office to make the decision and, you know, make the calls on things, which I totally get. That, that would not be good, so.
I'll, I'll try and touch base with her today. And I, I will with the rest of the electants too, to talk about their occupancy that they're comfortable with, tell them what it's rated for and then they can make a decision, we'll make them a sign.
Okay, perfect, we'll do that. Any other questions before we move on? Okay, thanks, Aaron, for coming over. You're, you're welcome to stay.
I thank you. I did send you just a couple of edits for the stuff that won't impact anything, just.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Aaron. And more, more kudos from the community this weekend, so. It is. There's a lot of goodwill out there right now, so. How things are working, so that's, that's. Yeah, oh, yeah. That has, believe me, all goodwill has a very short lifespan. That could be gone tomorrow, yeah, what have you done for me today? That was yesterday.
Right.
Unfortunately. Okay, on to normal public work stuff.
Okay. Uh, let's see, we have a few items on the consent agenda. So the, uh, one of the subcontractors on the building requested a bond for their retainage, which is not normal, we've never done this before, but it is in the RCWs that they can do it. Since they, uh, their work is upfront, they don't wanna wait till the end of the project to close out to get their money, so the legislature changed that, which I think is a good thing, it's just new to us.
Then I can tell you as a, as a contractor, that bothered me too, for the very same reason, is that it's like, you know, you basically front everything and then you, they get to pay on to.
Wait a year to get paid.
Yeah, wait a year to get paid.
Or more.
Yeah. Yeah. Yeah, so this is new, but it's for the window and glass contractors, so. All right, we also have, we're closing out Trout Lake Highway, and so we have the final acceptance and release of retained fund for that project, which occurred last summer. Item number twenty is a final.
Case of there, you go.
Yeah.
Yeah, last summer.
Um, item number twenty is a final acceptance and release of retainage for the Pickleton fuel tanks. And that repair last summer.
There we go again.
Item number twenty-one is our digital submittal for all of our crab reports, so we can stay in good standings with crab. And, uh.
Excited to see that crab's getting a new director.
Yeah, yeah, Jane Wall.
Yeah, Jane.
Yeah, she does a good job with Wasaki, so.
Yeah, she.
Yeah. And then we have another pay, pay estimate for justice systems, that's for the jail control systems, and they're back again, working on some of our door position indicators that aren't working like they should. And construction wise, uh, I think we'll have our pre-con with, uh, the strippers, usually they do it in April and they'll start in May depending on the weather. If it stays dry and, and not wet, um, they'll come early. So they like to get us done early so they can work on the other side of the mountains and, and when it's actually dry there. Later. Courtney Road, um, really nothing new on that one, except for we've processed, have processed the deviation with Wash Dot, so on the upper portion of that road, we are, so DOT standards are a little different than the standards that we have for grade. So, um, for that standard classification of road, uh, we're supposed to have a ten percent max slope. Uh, but when we get up to the top, it gets steep and there are a lot of, uh, constraints. We have a Native American burial site. Uh, we have a well and houses that we're trying to avoid. And so there are limited ways we can kind of snake the road through while we're improving it. Uh, we still can't beat that ten percent grade, which is a max for this class of road. So, uh, we'll have for about, uh, twenty-four hundred feet. The upper portion of that will have thirteen point eight seven percent grade. Not to split hairs, but, uh, so it's a little steeper than the max under Wash Dot, which ours is more like twelve percent.
It's twelve percent.
Yeah, so. So we're close to our standard, but not DOT standards and the national standards are a little more restrictive for this class of road. So anyway, that's being processed through Wash Dot and we'll, we'll write it up as a waiver, so they use deviations. We call it waiver, so we'll package it up as a waiver that'll come before you guys next week with the same justification for doing it.
How many other roads do we have in the county that are above that ten percent that are these major county roads?
Um, there's, it depends on the class, so there, some of the roads would be more restrictive than the ten percent and some would be less, so you, I, I would venture to guess on a lot of the roads that haven't been, um, built, um, that there's quite a few or at some points.
Goats and.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Game trails. Like some of our roads.
Good No Station.
Yeah.
Stats Road.
Yep, oh god, yeah, Stats Road.
Yeah, so we have, we have a few.
Yeah, I've rode in the summer. But it's that steep though? Part of it's, that's pretty steep on the bottom part, there seems like. It's been a long time since I've done it.
Yeah.
Last time I was up and it had water bars, it was in like October and apparently that's how we left it for the winter, was effective, but.
Yeah. Yes, that's one thing, stats actively moves. So. Um, so anyway, that you'll see for Courtney. Old Mountain, I need to move this up to construction, but the contractor let us know that they wanna start the end of May. Start work, so we'll have a pre-con at sometime between here and before they start work at the end of May.
Can you go back and talk about the ten out of the eleven? Are we any closer on that right away?
No, they've, uh, we've been trying to get ahold of them by phone and our, our right-of-way agent has actually gone out there and we can't get them, so we are.
He says he's, he's willing to do it, he just can't make the schedule. He just, he'll sign, but for some reason, he just can't get.
Can't find a pen, I don't.
Yes.
Bring our own pen.
We've tried.
We try, well, you know, I got other things going on today.
Yeah, maybe.
Yeah.
Yeah, we need to kind of push them a little bit.
Yeah.
Or said Guido.
Let's stop ahead. There you go, so anyway, we're, it's still a holdup.
Got it, thank you.
Yeah. Uh, let's see, our paving, we're on the last review of the plans, they'll go to Wash Dot for pavers and then they have to approve those and give us permission to have construction funding to build it. And then we'll go out to add, uh, safety projects should go out to add, I think, next week. Maintenance, um, it's time to clean up after winter, so we're sweeping, west side will finish up this week. And then the brooms will go to the east side and we'll clean up the roads over here. And then we're brushing, mowing and grading, so everything's, it's that time of year to start cleaning up the sides of the road. That's pretty much it for, for work for the crews. Uh, the building, um, there's still, I think most of the frames now are installed. I think they received most of the glass Friday and yesterday, so they'll put those in, all but the operable windows where the plywood's going. And they have heat going in there, the insulation's going in on the first floor, they stock sheet rock. And so the sheet rockers will be hanging rock before too long as well on the first floor. And then everybody else will continue to work up, um, all the drains.
How many people would you figure we actually have working over there on a, any given day or the last week or so?
I'm gonna guess it's thirty to forty. It's probably a good guess on outside and inside, there's a lot of people. Yeah. So things you can't see, so we have the masons on the front side and then there's also, so the backside, the siding is metal. And so that's been kind of going at the same time as all the masonry work. And it's, they're almost, they started at the west end and they're working their way around, they're almost to the east end, so they're going pretty quick, so. And the roofers finished the majority of the roofing last week, so now they're, they're finishing up the caps and checking all the seals and seams that they welded together, so just kind of cleaning that up and connecting those drains properly will be the next step. So, cause they can't keep poking out through the windows once the glass gets in there. So. So it's dried in and, uh, and they're, they've got the heat going in there, so that'll dry everything out that wasn't, uh, dry. Uh, let's see, we're probably about eight million rough dollars in expenditures so far. So a little over halfway there for the building on expenditures. Some of those costs though are from the moves and temporary remodels and purchases of right-of-way for parking lots. Um, and then we're also putting together a contract to remove all the hazardous materials from the gray house behind us on the west side, and so we can actually remove it and at least now for a temporary parking, expand our parking. I think our challenge, once we opened, we've already talked to the contractor, uh, the beginning of last week and he's tried to get his contractors and subs to, um, not park out front. And so, well, that'll be a battle, I'm sure, because it looks really convenient to park there. If you're working on the building next door, so, uh, that'll be maybe a challenge, cause with thirty to forty people, some of them ride together, but not all of them.
See, you knew where I was going with that question, didn't you?
Yes. Yeah.
I do have a question going back to you, said you're doing cleanup on the house back here, uh, in removal of hazardous, are we talking asbestos? Okay, what are we, what are we removing?
Yeah, so the, the siding is asbestos fiber siding and then inside the house, the, the mud, which I've never ran into this before, the mud, sheetrock mud has asbestos in it. And so that'll have to be removed, I've never ran into that before.
Just to kind of, uh, any idea on what it's gonna cost us to have that asbestos part of it removed?
Not yet, but once we come up with an estimate, we'll, I'll let you know.
Well, I'm just, yeah, no, it, it's more for information for nuisance abatement in the future. Not having anything to do with that, just, uh, a teaching tool or a lesson.
Yeah, so.
Future issues we can run into.
Yeah, maybe we could talk about the last time we did an office here, what it cost us to remove.
Yeah, they're right around, well, let's see, we, last one we did, I think, was the assessors and I believe it was right around seven thousand bucks to do it, and that's scraping it out. And they have to put in, it's a little cheaper if they do outside, cause then you don't have to have all this intricate ventilation system, which we have to do and we do it in here.
In here, it's tougher.
Yes.
Yeah, but outside, there's no one in the building and, you know, things are really more.
See, if you remember, when, uh, when that all gets done and you see a bill for it, let me know, it's just.
Yeah.
At least that's just a personal lesson, though, it's like.
Yep.
Did, did we get when the asbestos folks were here and then we're gonna go down to Click-It-Tap to the Old Mill site and that building? Folks were here and then we're going to go down to Click It Tap to the Old Mill Site and that building.
We gotta look at that too. Yeah, that'll be another area where if we want to remove that last building, which we do.
Send the roofing.
Yeah.
Oh, it isn't. Okay, yeah, that's what I didn't know. I didn't hear if there was stuff, so it isn't a roofing.
Yep.
They just put that fiber in everything.
They did, yeah. It was filler, good filler, good filler.
Yes.
Adds in everything. Um, the courthouse entry, I think we're in the, uh. Contracts of bond stage and then, uh, once that's done, then we'll actually schedule work.
Yeah. Estimate that starting.
That's your guess.
Probably Aprilish. That's when we're gonna try to push the start is April, because we're gonna start on the east end first. It's gonna be easier to get it done before we go to 100% open.
Yeah.
Because that'll have the biggest impact.
No, that's good.
Yeah, so the.
Between that and, I'm assuming the COVID ten will come down by then, but then their parking, we're gonna be pretty tight for a while.
Yeah, so the other thing that will start in the spring, which is a part of the bigger project, is we rebuild the whole parking lot out here. And we rebuild the street. So that parking that's on the one side will go away for a while. And so that's why it's important for us to get the other building down, so we can expand that west parking lot. Uh, so we actually have more, but it won't be long and they'll start work out here, because it's, you know, we have about six months left of work. And this is the road construction season now, so. Yeah, it's, it'll be challenging for a bit.
Well, I think we need to reinforce with the, the general contractor to really encourage. The employees, because they're there all day.
Yeah.
I mean, they could park a distance away and then walk and they're there for the day. Versus people coming into the courthouse might be just here for a few minutes or 20 minutes or a half hour or something. It's a little more of an issue for them. Because there's, there's plenty, there's plenty of parking in town, just right here.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Some of them parked across the street over potentially where the gas station was, but. Usually just two or three of them, why don't park them out, but I don't know that permission to park there either.
Right.
Private property that was.
Yeah, I think the electricians, because they're back and forth and their trucks get tools, so.
Right, I mean, I'm a little more sympathetic to that, but laborers where you're. Show up with your boots on, you're.
All day, all day. You can walk a block.
Yeah, you can walk a block.
I guess our other option is just to direct all county employees to park over and buy.
Yeah, grocery shop.
Get them used to it, because that's probably where they're gonna.
It's part of our employee wellness program.
Definitely another option. Yeah.
Because I got the last spot in that lot this morning. Cork Doc Krista, she was not happy.
All the more reason to remove my building and expand.
Yeah.
Okay.
I think she came and parked in law enforcement, so. That's good.
Yeah, I think we'll, we'll gain some, I think the sheriff has some vehicles that may be able to get moved up to the.
Yeah, that's true.
And so we'll gain some spots over there that, uh, some of those vehicles aren't, haven't been moved in a while.
Okay.
So that'll help too. Uh, so the last thing on the building is the furniture stuff, and so I, I sent this to you guys as well as, uh. And, uh. So I, I, I came up with this wireframe, which is on the front, which I think. And they got rid of the, the little spindly chairs that were the waiting chairs, so they're, they're not shown, but there is room for visitor chairs there on the other side of the desk. And then if you flip they, you can kind of see a rendering of that space. And there are multiple different configurations of this L-shaped desk with an extension out the front. And this would be. Uh, for the other offices, almost all the office space and people, you know, there's bookshelves, bookshelves with cabinets. Bookshelves with files or just files. Um, so you have the upper, upper cabinets that close and then the L-shaped desk. To work at. And so this is kind of, I think, the general layout. Some of the offices can have, they're big enough to have, uh, like a desk with a credenza behind you, if that's. Something that's more useful or useful for people to, to have, but there are very few offices that are, that are that size. So this is a kind of a generic plan that will fit in most offices. And then the last page is kind of the cubicle layouts.
Is the only difference between 4A and 4B, um, those shelves on the right hand side? Trying to look at their.
Yeah, so one has, so one has drawers and one has.
Yeah.
Yeah. And then one's an open shell. Yep. Yeah, so the, the plan view shows the two, um, guest chairs in there. Just every time they try to pick out a chair, we're like, everybody, it just didn't look right. So we've given them examples of guest chairs that, um, we have and hopefully they'll find something that's similar. Yeah, right. Yeah, so. And I don't know for you guys, if you're interested in something like this, I think for most of the offices, we're looking at more of a laminate top. Uh, the commissioners chambers and offices will have more of the wood veneer. So they're, they're a little bit of an upgrade from everybody else, which is how it should be, I think. So.
And then that's a lot of horizontal spaces for me to stack.
A lot of files.
Lot of files, lot of paper.
Um, so then the next step is colors and I think that's, that's the next struggle, because I know it is with cubicles. I think we're, you know, there's only so many options of color combinations and I, I, I think we've narrowed it down to about two or three. And then we just have to flip a coin and pick. But it, it's actually the, the example is kind of similar to what. We're already looking at, so they've kind of, and you know, you look at the carpet and it's actually kind of close to what we have. Picked out for the building and, uh, so they're looking at some shades of gray and, and a brown tone too, because they'll, they'll all match. So then I think that's the next step is, you know, what does the, what does the furniture look like? I think darker, the darker furniture seems to be, you know, more traditional, so like this is the lightest, I think. This in here, this oak and kind of stained kind of a honey color seems to be the lightest we want to go. Other people prefer darker. So. That's really up to you guys and your spaces and then, then the rest of the offices as well, but that seems to be what people are saying.
I would trust their opinion because I'm not a. Yeah, no.
Okay.
Whatever you guys want to do.
Okay.
Okay.
All right, thank you. A minute left, so I'll be quick. Yeah, fill the positions. Uh, so we have, uh, we had a foreman retire in Bickleton. Uh, we had a maintenance tech in White Salmon, um, leave us for more money. And, uh, so we'd like to refill those two spots.
Quick question, left you for more money, did they go to another county or did they go to a private?
PUD. PUD. Yeah, um, not local PUDs, no crises. But that's just the nature of it. Yeah, we had, we have good people and, uh.
Other people want good people.
Yeah. Good thing.
Good for them.
Yeah.
Bad for us.
Yeah, so we'd like permission to refill both of those and then, uh, we, we kind of shuffled around a little bit inside. And so the mower position in Glenwood is the one that we have to fill again. So. Put that out and then we also, every year, we hire flaggers, temporary flaggers for the summer. We also hire interns, um, to help us out with our, collecting our data for crab. Um, and so their temporary positions, usually there's somebody locally that might be returning from college or. Just available and wants to work. So we have two of those interns and four flaggers to fill that are temporary and they're already budgeted. They're already budgeted, yeah. Okay, thank you. Um, then the last follow-up, uh, we finished our peer review for the, the Kool Short Flat. And, uh, the peer review showed that the pond as configured doesn't meet the standard and will need to be modified somehow. So, or we sent the report to the applicant and their engineer yesterday and so, um, they're looking at it, reviewing it.
Okay.
That's it.
Okay, any questions? Yes.
Wanted to share a phone call that was received in our office. Gentleman lives near the Pioneer Center. Evidently he talked to senior services and he was advised to call the commissioners. He's had issues with the people stealing gas. And he asked for permission to park his pickup over by the Pioneer Center, near the sheriff's office for protection. And I told him I would cast that on.
I guess. I know that there are a couple of days during the week when seniors.
Yeah.
Were, are having meals and if we open back up and do that, it's a challenge for parking.
Yes, very much.
I, I sympathize with him, but.
Well, if you add, let, yeah, I mean, there's gonna, there could be other requests, like.
Right, that's what I said, I sympathize with it, but. That's not what it was built for, in my opinion.
Is he, I wonder where he's living in, uh, is he inside the city limits of White Salmon or?
Is there like a Temple Shalom or something?
Oh, that's where he is?
Yeah.
Okay, I'm assuming.
I have his number.
Okay, yeah, maybe I'll give him a call back or Jake can give him a call back as far as it just. I think that's, I think it'd be problematic just because we can't, we can't, otherwise it's just anybody. You know? Although I would say, I don't think we're, we don't police one way or the other. Like if somebody wanted to park their car there overnight and move it in the morning, I don't know. Our issues with capacity is during business hours.
Yes, my issue is not whether it's done or not, is whether I get permission.
Exactly.
So I'm not willing to give permission, so other than that.
Okay. Anything else for these fine gentlemen before they leave?
Good update today, gentlemen.
Thank you, thanks for your work on reopening.
Yeah, it looks, it looks way better and, yeah, thank you.
Okay.
Good day, gentlemen.
Yeah, you too.
We want to post it on the website that people are opening ads.
I would make sure there's something on it, at least.
Thank you. We're not, we're not setting appointments. I mean, that, I mean, department's good, I guess, if they wanted to. I would maybe just have them contact the department, find out what their specific reopening.
Yeah, something of that.
Or what they.
I just want them contacting, ahead of showing up. Because I think they're gonna get pissed if they show up and get turned away to the number of appointments and those. What, 95% of the people are gonna be showing up, worrying.
Yeah, and I believe there's, there's department numbers on the door now. I was. That's how that works now as far as, like, because the doors are locked, if I cut it and then it's got the department. I know it is over the annexes too, I believe. Hi, good morning, Joe.
Morning.
Yeah, we don't want to piss.
Any goodies that you bring to work today, Joe?
Boy. I, I would love to say.
More than one sheet of paper.
Love to say I'm keeping it short, but, um, no, and I don't want to also say that's probably why Lee. Started scheduling me right before lunch, like a long weekend. I'm already starting late.
Yeah.
So I'll blame that on. I'll blame that on Public Works. But no, I will, I will get through this as fast as possible and you, of course, can cut me off at any time. But, um. Yeah, I wanted to make sure that I'm thorough. So as always, good morning.
Good morning.
Nice brisk day out there this morning. I believe it was 24 degrees at my house. Welcome to spring. So as of 10:04, I can say that the, uh, radio system is performing and functioning normally at this time. Get to that, other things in a minute. Um, the annual tier three radio system report is still being reviewed. I've not had time to fully review that, I just received it in January. Uh, or I usually receive that sometime in October, but I'm still gonna have to dive into that and follow up. On any repairs and maintenance that need to be made. The, I'm still working on the, uh, funding sustainability for the ongoing operations and maintenance of the radio system. Waiting for some answers from the treasurer's office about what's the different options would actually bring in for revenue and so on. As well as gathering different information from our counterparts in other counties and how they operate 911. On their radio systems, uh, through users' fees or taxes or so. So that is not off my radar, but it is, it is a substantial and long-term project. To make sure I give you the information that you need. As far as the radio project, um, still waiting on the security camera information and stacker. Still hasn't been able to be brought online. The click that fire station upgrade, the electrical service installation for our new room there was done this morning by PUD. I'm happy to report that they were able to get it done. In two hours, they cut the grid power and, uh, we were able to run on battery backup for that time. That all worked well. I am continuing as was mentioned, I believe, last week, week before, talking about. When we do transition the, the, uh, the power, the generator, all those things that. And the radio equipment itself from where it currently is to the new, uh, room that we've constructed. Developing contingency plans to make sure that we do not lose, um, functionality of that site. As a, as a public safety radio site, we can't have that go offline at any one time. So I'm working closely with Public Works, uh, as well as the contractors. To make sure that that site is always up and running during any, any cut over processes. Is there any questions about that? And, um. Unfortunately, Julie can't be with us today, she is off on medical leave. She had a little accident last week, so I will be giving the 911. Dispatch report and you can see the call volumes there. Um, they're remaining relatively steady. These are typically a low call volume in the winter months, but still a fair number of calls. Which is up. Year over year, it's up historically, continues to increase. Um, understaffing, we have one casual physician that's posted. Uh, we got your verbal authorization, it's on your consent agenda today. We have one full-time employee moving back to a casual physician in May. And we have two employees currently in training and doing very well. One is, uh, nearing the end of her training cycle, so we're very encouraged by her progress and her performance so far. And one of them just started last week. Under training and operations, the chief operations presented the training at the, uh, state conference. Last week or the week before about operating with a positive attitude. We're hosting another training in May, the power of peer support, which deals with, you know. Mental wellbeing and so on in our nine one call taking dispatching world. That's important to keep our people mentally healthy, physically as well. We've been prioritizing the department's policies and procedures project as an ongoing thing to finalize that in some form or all. Although there's always changes that come up, we're always being mandated to do different things in different ways with different technology. Processes and procedures that are given to us by other agencies, both state and federal. And in April, we have the National Public Safety Tell Communicators Week. It's on your consent agenda for the proclamation for that, the week of April eleventh through the seventeenth. And we're making plans on how to celebrate that and recognize our communications officers during that week. Typically, we have, I will host the barbecue and invite the first responders and all of that, it still remains to be seen. If that's gonna be a good idea and if I do, if anyone didn't even show up, so last year we didn't, no, we didn't do it, so. We're working on it and make it as meaningful as we can with the parameters that we have. Any questions on nine one dispatch? Well, this will go quick.
We're gonna see no questions.
Excellent, yeah, here's the meat of it, emergency management program. Under COVID nineteen updates, E O C still remains activated at level two. As it has been for over a year now. One year anniversary being March second or third. We continue to process those P P requests from all local stakeholders, hospitals, EMS, so on, law enforcement. Still planning for being prepared for long-term P P use, the counterfeit three M N ninety-five mask that I mentioned before. With a lot of, I don't know, I guess with help from the prosecutor's office. Rebecca was able to convince that company that they needed to honor. The nature of that purchase in good faith and they're gonna take them back and provide us with a full refund except for one box of twenty, which we'd already opened.
Wow.
And used a couple.
I didn't expect that at all.
Neither did I, but the DA's office actually reported that to the A G's office. And rather than deal with the A G and get a black mark. They decided that they would give refunds to everybody, because like I said, we're by far not the only ones. I feel for them and I don't know if they'll have any recourse for the manufacturer that sold them the counterfeit. As of now, we're preferring to return those to them and get a full refund.
Question is, do they have the money to?
I know the refund. Like I said, I. Get it over to the prosecutor. Yep, the boxes are being rebackheaged right now and I saw them this morning, we're getting ready to ship them out.
How many in total were there?
I don't have that number off the top of my head, is like masks, you mean, they were thousands of them, there was like five thousand dollars worth plus, I think it was. Yeah, maybe even over six, it was in that between five and seven thousand dollars that we paid for that shipment.
So a thousand masks or something?
Somewhere in that range, yeah. And there were different sizes as well. And then this morning, I had a little hiccup. In starting the move of the P P E staging area from the fairgrounds exhibit hall to the new staging area container. Given the twenty-four degree temperature this morning, Public Works woke up to a water leak, so they had to go deal with that before they could help us. With all that heavy lifting, but they are gonna work on that this afternoon and so on, so that is in process. And we're gonna move everything we can to that container and then. The rest. Divvy out to all of the local stakeholders, emergency responders and so on, so make sure that. They have what they need for at least a fourteen day supply of everything to start out with, if not more. Because it's, it's, it's a lot more, it's a lot more functional and easier to work out of the fairgrounds than it will be out of this container for us. So I'm gonna give them as much as we can now as we move, so one, we don't have to move it, and two, we can get it out efficiently. And they have what they need.
Joe, what's the, what's the life expectancy on a lot of that P P, is it one to three years or what?
You know, it depends on the components, but like the mass and the elastic in the mask is some of the most short-lived. Like N ninety-five elastic or rubber band type material, it's got a five-year shelf life according to that's. According to the information that I have and that FEMA's stockpiles that they've had, the national stockpiles. That's what they try to do is rotate on a five-year basis.
Is there any plan for us in rotating out with? As we come out of this so that we'll always have a stockpile working with the two hospitals so that we can. We can rotate it through for us while they're using it, so we always have a stockpile?
There, in the past, we, emergency management has never done that, provided that and, and not only for infectious disease type incidents. But the other reason that we use N ninety-five masks or sometimes simple masks is in fire season. And not only because of, you know, wildfires in our county, but across the state and I think it was twenty sixteen or seventeen that we had the wildfire smoke come all the way down from Muskeg in Canada. We had a really bad year that year, public health department has typically had those masks or gotten them from somewhere. Given these circumstances, however. I'm considering that and whether that is an emergency management.
So.
Function or not.
Normally, I would assume that the hospitals buy their own equipment. And in under this circumstance, we purchased it and was giving it to them, and we purchased it with. Tax dollars or grant money or how did we come upon this?
So all except for the six or so thousand dollars in the counterfeit mask that we purchased, I wanted to have our own supply that was outside of the state's tiered requirements for who we could give it to. Under what circumstances, that's why I want our own, everything above and beyond those few.
Was just passed out from the state?
Yep, was given to us from the state emergency operations center at no cost. So everything, you know, in bulk that we have was no cost to the county. And anything that we have purchased for the container, the racks and any other miscellaneous supplies as well as those masks that I talked about. N ninety-fives that we purchased. Have either all been reimbursed through CARES funding or FEMA grant funds already or is proved to be. So the county hasn't expended any, her local dollars to date on those P P supplies. But yes, you're correct, what we're talking about going forward. For the most part would be what we would give out to the public. Like masks for wildfire smoke or air quality.
The county, I have no problem with that. Where I would have a problem is if the county is buying masks and then distributing to the hospitals going forward.
Yeah, and I, I also remember that during the train derailment in Mosher, we all trained prior and that smoke that went over Binge and White Salmon.
No issues with going to public at all.
Okay, yeah, during Spring Fest, that's another time that we would hand out those masks for air quality purposes. Did that answer your question, Commissioner Anderson?
Yes, sir.
So yeah, that move is going on and I, I know that we wanna be, board wants to be prepared for anybody that wants to come in and. And use the fairgrounds facility and that exhibit hall is one of the main indoor areas that they rent for parties and so on. So we're gonna do our best to get that cleared out and available for rental as soon as possible. Working with Public Works, recently the request that we've been getting, so as you can see there, Fire District Three. We have Valley Hospital for their drive-through vaccination clinics at the fairgrounds and then the. The EMS district as well, and we expect more from other fire districts. Also, I just got one in from the sheriff's office for more P P supplies that I approved this morning. Continuing plans for those future needs, whatever that might be, so responsibilities for D E M. Any support from public health or other stakeholders, we're also working at scheduling another meeting with the agricultural producers in the county. To see if they're gonna need support from the E O C or public health regarding vaccinations or P P E, we still have. Some supplies that were given to us specifically for ag producers, hand sanitizers, masks and certain things that came from the state department of agriculture. So as they ramp up for their new harvest seasons and so on this spring, I wanna make sure that they're have what they need and we can support them in any way. As of yesterday, there were seven hundred and forty-five total COVID cases, which is only a positive in my opinion, four cases since I met with you last, a month ago, February twenty-second. That Monday before I met here. So four cases in a month is, is great, two active cases currently and currently nine deaths in the county due to COVID nineteen. As of Friday, there was over ten thousand total vaccination doses given across the county by all providers. And I'm still working on E O C activity summary report. I, Finance Section Chief got that to me, I think a couple of weeks ago now, I just not had time. But as soon as I can finalize that, that draft, final form. Ass that we hold at a stakeholders meeting, a policy group meeting, I should say, the three of you, actually the chairman of the board here and the three mayors. So I can give you that information and talk in more detail if need be, to provide you with that report and I see my. Finance section chief joined us, did you have something to add?
No, I was just coming in to help with the financial discussion.
Thank you. And that covers my COVID nineteen report for emergency management. Any questions?
Hard to believe it's been a year, but it's, in some ways, it's been a year and in some ways that it's only been a year.
There's two edges to that.
There is.
Yep. But there's, there's a lot of positive things going on.
Yeah.
As you mentioned earlier. Yeah, there's, there's positive attitudes out there and it's getting better for a lot of people, we're thankful for that. We also did receive from Williams. It's commonly referred to as Williams Pipeline, but officially Williams. Corporation. This is related to the December natural gas service outage, Binge and White Salmon and the Hutter River Odell area. They just spontaneously mailed us a check, which was referenced as being a grant for five thousand dollars. Representing Williams contribution for Hutter River White Salmon Assistance, quote unquote. And that, that happened in December, right before Christmas, that week of Christmas, the twentieth to twenty-fifth. I think they had everybody that was actually home and available to get relit. You know, there's snowbirds and those type of absentee landowners, but everybody in Quikgetat County that could be. Reestablished was by Christmas morning, the river and Odell areas took several more days to finish that up, but. They provided that money and we're reaching out to them, we already talked to the Otter's Office about the, you know, our ability to accept that. And we can. And then we need to make sure that we use it properly, I also have to talk to the mayors of those two cities still. As they represent them as well and this happened in their jurisdictions. To see, you know, what we can do to be prepared for the next outage, if there is one, and to purchase supplies.
You know, those mayors gotta check, those cities gotta check too.
I have not talked to them. I, I, yeah, this came specifically to emergency management to, to be prepared, to buy emergency preparedness supplies that. Be relevant to a next, the next outage, you know, that's gonna be space heaters, blankets. Figure that out and do what we can, spend that most effectively. Boy, third page, county burn ban and, and I'm gonna go into a little more detail, I apologize to Chairman Sodder. But since the, I have two new commissioners on the board, I thought it would be good. To give you some additional information just on the burn ban, if you've heard it all before and you want me to stop, just say so. But our burn ban, there's, there's county burn ban. This is the burn ban map, we created burn ban zones.
Why does the zones go backwards from the commissioner districts, I've always wanted to know that.
So we don't confuse them, because the lines are different, right?
Yes, so.
They, they went that way because zone one always goes first, East County, so we, zone one burn ban starts off the season. And then we move across the county. So in preparations to coordinate with the fire chiefs of each fire district. One other thing to note as a, as a legal matter, this only applies to the county fire districts, not the city departments, the city municipalities can set their own. In the county, the state law says that. To have burn bans, the county fire district has to have a burn permit process, so they have to issue a permit. That is either good or not good all year long, otherwise they can't issue their own burn ban. The only fire district in the county that issues burn permits is Fire District Seven. None of the other counties has volunteered from the top down mostly, except for District Three. On the west end out of Houston, you know, they don't have paid chiefs or paid clerical staff and so on, so. They don't really have the ability to have their own burn permit process effectively, thus not their own burn bans. So over the years, and as you can see, you see somebody reading forward in the burn ban. County code and through ordinances and resolutions in the past, I think, starting in ninety-four, the board decided that there needed to be a process. For creating a county burn ban and working with the fire districts because they couldn't do so on their own legally. That evolved, but I think it was. Second or third year that I was here, a few years ago now. We decided to go with the zone structure because before it was a countywide burn ban and it typically went on July first. So that meant that the whole east end of the county was at high risk for at least a couple of months. Before the county burn ban went on and people on the west end of the county were saying, you know, I still got a mud puddle in my driveway, why are you under a burn ban? Right, if you put it on earlier than July first, so I, I worked with Casifa, the Fire Chiefs Association, to come up with the zone. Program and then the county can release burn ban by zone and make it more. Or applicable to the actual conditions on the ground, fire weather conditions. So that's a little bit of the history, any questions? And, and that's the other thing I do, I work with all the fire chiefs to get by zone now, get their recommendations, get a consensus from all the fire chiefs in each zone. They win, they would recommend the county start the burn ban for that zone. I do that as best as I can through Casifa, so I don't have to deal with all fifteen of them individually. And then I pass that on as a recommendation to the board. along with the resolution for start and an end date for that burn ban for those zones. So that's the process I'm going to be starting now because District Three, historically, or excuse me, Zone One, historically starts May first, you know, in a usual year. And that's, some of the fire districts even advertise it, even though it wasn't legal. They have signage on their roads and they flip it down May first and say there's a burn banning, even though it's not enforceable. But in the past, those burn bans, like I said, historically would be May first. For Zone Two would be June fifteenth or July first, and for Zone Three, at least by July first. Last year, Zone One was May first, Zone Two was May fifteenth, and Zone Three was June first because the the National Interagency Fire Center Predictive Services said that the significant wildfire potential outlook was either higher than normal or so on. That's the data that I look at as well, and I pass on to the fire chief so we can make that decision and a recommendation to you. And this year, the predictive service is saying for May and June, that will be average. It will, it will be a normal potential for significant wildfires in the months of May and June. So that's what I'm working from right now. These reports come out beginning of every month, so I'll look at that again, first of April, first of May, to make those decisions and give you those recommendations. Any questions on that process? So the next thing I'd like to talk about and get your go-ahead or not is the county burn ban ordinance or code and the need to update it. This is something I've been talking to the fire chiefs about for at least three years. The packet that I handed out to you, you can see that the the current Chapter eight, one-two-four, under Purpose and Definition. The definition of outdoor burning means combustion of any type in an open fire or outdoor container. That leaves a lot.
Like my barbecue.
Exactly. So I think if you'll turn to resolution that is in the middle of the packet that I gave you, you can see in the last paragraph I've highlighted, the board has chosen, before I started here, this is what was in the standard language of the resolution, that residential barbecues will be allowed. So under the county burn bans, that's all the public has to go on. It's open flame outside and residential barbecues will be allowed. So both for the fire agencies, law enforcement, and the county sheriff's office, as well as emergency management taking questions about that, and it's just not clear enough. How to clarify that in the county code is the challenge, and I do not want to overstep my bounds with fire chiefs because they are the fire authorities in each of the districts in the county. So I, I very much want their consensus and have solicited their input. What both Real Seven and the City of Goldendale have done is create the last document that you see in your package there, which talks about what is and what isn't allowed. What some of the verbiage that I'd like to consider would be, you know, gas fueled devices with the shut-off valve, because there's lots of gas fire pits, gas barbecues, but we also have now the wood pellet and wood chip fired barbecues and smokers, all those kinds of things that are relatively newer appliances that people use for outdoor cooking. So crafting that kind of language, I would need to work with both your office, league, about the process for amending an ordinance, also with prosecuting attorney to make sure all that legal language is correct. But today, I'd just like to know if you have, if you want to tell me to stop, keep going, or, or any direction that you would like me to take on this. Whether I can have all this done and go through the public comment process in time for the first burn ban this year, I don't know, given you have time constraints. But if I don't, if I don't keep moving forward on it, it's never going to happen. It's just going to cause more and more problems.
Right. I think you're cleaning up dirty code, so however long it takes you is better than not cleaning up dirty code, so.
Thanks, sir. Yeah, okay. Hope you can get me down this path and, yeah, let me know if you, anything or have any recommendations. Keep working on that. Training and exercises, same, so I've been, still working under the ever-changing guidance, make sure we can provide what we've provided. You can see the list of emergency management program grants that are in my office now and which ones are in which status. It's listed there. Have several of them. They were working on progress, or projects. One, let's see, I think I'm going to bounce back. One thing, after I finished my talking points here, I found an email which set the the Airport Resilience Project Meeting with Columbia Gorge Regional Airport. I mentioned that last time I was here. That was in the works. They delayed it, so it is now set for April eighth as a virtual meeting to discuss those issues with our county airport or a regional airport. So I plan to attend that. They specifically have time in there for local emergency management, as well as public works and utilities and so on, to talk about the resiliency of those facilities for a worst-case scenario. Then last on the agenda, I wanted to end with the good news. I did find someone that was willing to take our position, part-time Emergency Management Program Coordinator. We have made a conditional offer of hire to Kevin DeWitt. He is starting on May first as of now, and he is a past environmental health and safety expert. That's his background, many years. So he now lives outside of Goldendale. And although he's taking significant pay cuts and no benefits, he wants to stay local and he seems to be very motivated. So we're going to see how that all works out. Excited to have him on board and hopefully I'll bring him to the table and he can speak to emergency management program activities, take some of that workload in the future.
Well, not hopefully.
Yes.
Not on me.
I'm optimistic, but I'm I want to get my hopes up ten high, right? But yes, that's the plan.
Yes. What did he last work for?
He worked actually for Central Washington University out of Lumsford. Yeah, he was their emergency program coordinator over there, lastly, and he was commuting from here until that got to be too much, four-hour commute. That's my report. Questions?
Any additional questions?
Sorry, six minutes.
Director?
No, look at that, you're done early. Excellent.
Going through that every four pages.
No, no. My goal is to keep it on one of your favorites. Yes, two pages, yeah. All right, thank you.
All right, thank you. Get outside, enjoy the beautiful sunshine.
Well, I do have a window in my office. Unfortunately, that'll be the best idea for, you know, for the day, but yes. The sunshine is great. And I hear this weekend, supposed to be like high fifties to sixty. Wow, Saturday and Sunday.
And no wind.
Yes.
No such thing, right?
Great day, so, yeah. To, to all the public, then, as you know, today, this weekend could be your, your weekend to do that last minute brush burning and have your barbecues and fire pits and all that outside. Enjoy while you still can.
You got till July, yeah. Puddles dry up. Okay. We want to discuss or tackle before the break for the hour. Something like it, okay. We will go ahead and adjourn. We will be back at one o'clock. Start the, start the recording. I will call the meeting to order. Let the record show all three commissioners are present. We'll start first with the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Can any participants on? Okay. I would, what promotion on the agenda?
I was just getting ready to make a motion to approve the business agenda as presented.
Second, you have a motion to second on the business agenda, any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion passed.
Are you okay with both minutes?
I have not looked at the sixteen.
Want to just do the ninth now, or?
Yes, that would be fine.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we approve the commissioner meeting minutes for March ninth, twenty-twenty-one, as presented.
I will second the motion. You have a motion to second on the March ninth meeting minutes. Any discussion on those? For being none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion passed. That brings us to citizen comment. This is an opportunity for citizens to address the board of commissioners. Please limit your comments to seven minutes or less per individual. If you wish to address the board, please either raise your hand in the Zoom format or unmute yourself. Please state your name for the record and where you live. Are we seeing anybody else? Not so far.
There's Russ.
Okay, go ahead, please, sir.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. Russ Hansen, number ten, Tucker Hill Road. Yeah, I just want to take a moment to thank you guys for enacting the moratorium on solar ordinances for the Knight Road project. I think that was a big step, and I know last week you were talking about application fees and appeal fees, and you guys are working on that, so I'm hoping that we'll see some progress in, in that area. I just want to thank, thank you for the work and keep it up.
Thanks, sir, Mr. Hansen. Okay. Others for citizen comment.
Good afternoon, Mr. Commissioners. Greg Wagner, three oh three Fish Ashford, Goldendale.
Commissioners, this is Dave Barda. Can you hear me?
We're sorry, everybody. Greg's back too.
All right, let's start with Greg was, was in line first, and then we'll take Mr. Barda. Go ahead, Greg, if you can hear us now. I didn't know we can do that.
I apologize.
What did you press? With this big red button, I guess.
No, Greg, Dave Barda's still there, Dave B.
Okay. But we heard Russ just fine.
Yeah, we heard Russ just fine. We didn't hear anymore, so. Technical difficulty.
Okay, Mr. Barda, do you want to give it a try?
It's Greg.
Greg's back. You're going to use the, you're going to use the computer, turn the phone off.
Greg, if you have phone audio and computer audio going at the same time, it's causing feedback.
Uh, technology.
What did we have shifted on, all right?
I had you muted. I had not unmuted you. I thought I had.
Oh, I don't know.
No, so they couldn't hear us.
They couldn't hear you.
Oh, all right, but that doesn't, okay. We'll ask Dave Barda now.
Yeah. Anybody?
Okay, Mr. Barda, I see that you are unmuted. Go ahead, sir.
Good afternoon, four twenty-Fish Atrey Road. I also want to thank the Commissioners for your work and considering a, a bit of a pause so that we can continue to focus on land use and ordinances in this area. After looking through some of the RZWs that guide the FSAC process, I know that's a fear sometimes, but they do try to pay pretty close attention to local ordinances and so on. My hope is, as we get through that hearing process, and I look forward to finding out when that is, as we get through that hearing process, we can get some guidelines for energy facility siting, particularly, of course, solar in the future. Again, just saying, are giving us time to consider this and, and really educate ourselves and think about the future of Clickitack County. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Barda. All right, Mr. Wagner, are you back? I know you, you couldn't hear us before.
Hello.
There you go.
Greg Wagner, three oh three Fish Ashrey, Goldendale.
Thank you, Mr. Wagner, go ahead.
Okay, I'm a member of CEES. I want to thank you guys for enacting the solar moratorium, and I still have some questions and I have some comments. I know you won't be able to answer my questions now, but I'll email you them and hopefully you'll follow up. Is there a moratorium? Is there an actual written document? If it is, where can I view it? When will the first public meetings be held? How will you notify all twenty-two thousand citizens about the meetings? Will you do a bulk mailing to all the citizens? Will the meetings be recorded? Will they be in-person, Zoom, or both? Will the solar ordinance be decided by only the citizens and the county officials with no input from the solar companies? Will all solar company projects planned for Knight Road be put on hold until the ordinances are written and enforced? Have some questions for Mr. Anderson. You keep saying trust the process. I assume you mean the conditional use process. Where can I view the complete detailed CUP? Surely it isn't the two-page CUP brochure of frequently asked questions posted on our county website. How can we trust a process we've never seen? If CUP has never been used for permitting a solar farm, again, how can we trust that process? You told me that the CUP supersedes the EOZ, so the citizens lose the five-hundred to fifteen-hundred foot setback, and the citizens must negotiate with the solar companies for those setbacks. That's a losing proposition for a citizen. When will we have solar ordinance that we can, we cannot allow them to be ignored and they must be followed completely? All the EIS must be done before a project can be built, not like Long Hill, where many of the EISs were ignored and addressed by stating to be decided later, and that has All the EIS must be done before a project can be built, not like Long Hill where many of the EISs were ignored and addressed by stating to be decided later, and that has never happened. If we have ordinance which are adhered to and the MDS are not used, there will be less or no appeals. To establish solar ordinances now will prevent future problems and truly protect the county and the citizens. Thank you very much.
Okay. Mr. Wagner, I sent you an email there about lunchtime, giving you some direction on the CUP process. I don't know if you received that or not.
No, I haven't, but I'll look for it. Thank you.
You're welcome, too.
I can give you just an update on the ordinance for the moratorium. The planning director has prepared it. It's being vetted in the PA's office right now, and when it's ready, it will come before you.
Thank you. Okay, we are still in citizen comment. Sir, other citizens that wish to address the board could be on any topic. If so, please either raise your hand, unmute yourself, and identify yourself.
Okay.
Elaine, go ahead.
Good afternoon, Commissioner is Elaine Harvey, 425 Hill Road. I just want to say a comment that I noticed that Mark Jobe is going to be on one of the boards, the citizen review boards. And in the past, I've myself and others in CEES just posted awareness on Facebook. So just, you know, awareness posts of solar project in the county, potential impacts to residents and the county and the environment. And this person, Mark Jobe, he's like one of the main ones who was totally against us. And, you know, he just said so many rude comments against us, and here we're bringing out facts to the public. So, you know, I just think that needs to be brought out since he's going to be on one of the boards, the planning board, I believe. And you guys, you know, during your guys' process of choosing individuals, you know, you guys didn't want CEES on some of the boards because we'd have to recuse ourselves. Well, I think, you know, it should be neutral, too. And Mark Jobe, he was totally against us, the CEES group, and totally for solar. For, I don't know what his reason was, but, you know, we're just bringing out awareness because of the project was kept in secrecy for three to four years. So I just wanted to bring that out, and that's all. Thanks.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Harvey. Commissioner Christopher.
Yeah, I, not that I want to address a lot of that, but I will say that Mark Jobe was appointed to the planning board. It is the Board of Adjustments that will hear conditional use permits, not the planning board. So the Board of Adjustments is the one that will make decisions on this project in the CUP process, not Mark Jobe of the planning board, just for clarification.
I would, I would also add, not to any specific member, but there is always an opportunity, if you believe a commission member, whether it's on the planning commission, Board of Adjustment, or any board that is going to be having any kind of regulatory or permitting or anything on a specific project, if you, if anybody feels that there is either a conflict of interest or that there have been ex parte contact that has, those can be brought to that board. When that matter is in front of them, that issue can be raised with the chair of whatever that individual board is, and then that board can determine if that member can be asked as far as to recuse themselves. So again, that is not specific to your issue that you raised, but that's always available to folks if they feel like somebody is conflicted. Okay, we are still in citizen comment?
Rossel Dimick?
Yes, go ahead, Ms. Dimick.
Rossel Dimick, 55 Tucker Hill Road. Mr. Christopher, I was reviewing some documents. I sent you all three, the link. It was from 2004. It was a recommendation of the Clickattack County Planning Commission, and didn't know if you had an opportunity to review that document. But in 2004, it looks like the planning commission actually made recommendations regarding the EOZ. So if, you know, people are on, are serving on the planning commission, it does seem that they do have, you know, have, you know, have a a recommendation for, you know, for hearing these processes and adjusting our policies. And then also regarding that same document that I had sent out, it, it really states, or it seems to me that it really, it really emphasizes that there's supposed to be two areas in the EOZ, one at 3.2, and it says that there should, there should be an EOZ for wind. And then 3.3, it says that there should be a EOZ for, I'm sorry, 3.1 says that there should be an EOZ for so, for wind, and 3.2 says an energy overlay zone for solar. And so my question is, is if this was recommended by the planning department, or Planning Commission back in 2004, why has that not been taken into consideration and completed? That was my comment. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, yes. So this is Commissioner Christopher. I'll kind of go back and address part of that. Yes, the planning commission was tasked with helping set up the EOZ. The Knight Road project is not part of the EOZ, so planning commission should not have any part of that. If the EOZ is reopened or adjusted, yes, it will go back before the planning board. And I hope at that time, if that does happen, if you have concerns about any planning board member, then you bring those concerns to the chairman of that board at that time before a vote takes place about a possible refusal of the vote. So that should solve that problem. The other part of it, we will address later, I believe.
Sure. Yes. Rossel, I remember getting, this is Commissioner Anderson. I responded to your questions, and then we sent those off to Mochi for the response on that. Have you got a response from B O C C about that email yet, or has that not been forwarded out?
It has been forwarded.
Oh, it has been forwarded. So, so you do have the, the response from the B O C C and Mochi with regards to those questions, correct?
I do, I, I may have just, I may, I'll look through it again, but I had, I did not see where it was, where it addressed the, the document that I was talking about, but I will look it over again. I know that you did respond, and you said that it was, that the wind and solar were, were supposed to be adopted into the EOZ. However, it just seems very confusing since there's two, two different sections in this document. And if they were supposed to be combined, why they weren't just part of one line? So I will look over that, that document from Mochi and see if it's right.
Rochelle, that, that was a multi-year process, the creation of the EOZ. It went through multiple iterations. It also went through a settlement process, correct? And so what started out in 2004 is never what comes out the end in 2007.
Yes.
Seven, I think it was. So that would be, you, you probably, there's, you know, a whole lot of iterations between that first original and what came out the other end.
Okay. Well, it just seemed like it was voted on, but I didn't see any resolution or any amendment to it, so, but maybe, maybe Mochi sent me a link to where that happened.
What's voted on by the planning board does not make county law. It then gets recommended to the commissioners, and the commissioners can accept or deny, so. There's that, too. So there's a whole process after the planning board to get things going.
And you commissioners held hearings, correct, after the planning commission? Yeah, there would have been. Yeah, there would have been. Okay, we are, thank you.
I apologize. All right, thank you.
That's okay. Everybody's learning this process.
Yep.
So that's, it's okay. One thing I am going to just take a second is the, because there's several folks on the, on this call Zoom meeting, and there is, I think, some confusion about, you know, you're, you're sending emails and asking for responses to individual commissioners. And I have been very reticent about responding, and that's not because I don't necessarily want to respond, but it is, we have to be very careful that we're not just conducting a public meeting in pieces away from the public. And so when you are asking questions from all three commissioners and then sort of sharing back and forth the responses from the individual commissioners, it is, in a sense, we are, we could be communicating outside of a public meeting. And that's why generally, if I see a response from a commissioner, I don't respond to it because that's the response. Outside, I'm happy to respond just in this, in a public meeting, but I'm not going to respond to emails. If you send an email to me directly, that's just to me, and I'm, I will respond to that, but not if it is basically part of a larger email that's to my two seatmates. Because my interpretation of the Open Public Meeting Act is that would be a violation.
And if individuals CC people or include them all, that, then you're all still part of the chain.
Right.
So it has to be totally separate and apart.
Right.
And then you won't have that issue.
Right. So I know that seems counterintuitive, but it really is, as far as it's, we have to be careful that we cannot communicate outside of a public meeting. Because it may seem fair to you, but it's not fair to the general public, because there is a conversation going on that they're not partying to then, and that's not okay. We are still in public comment right now, so if there is someone that wishes to address the board, this is your opportunity. So either unmute, say your name, speak up. Sherry, go ahead.
Good afternoon, commissioners. I would like to continue the conversation regarding conditional use permit process. I think, again, I'm going to say that people are unclear how that process really looks, how it starts when an applicant comes to Clickattack County, and they approach the county with a project development idea. And at that point, I'm assuming that this applicant will, if they know that their project needs special considerations, at that time will apply for a conditional use permit. Because my understanding is a conditional use permit is simply conditioned on something that isn't regulated, zoned ordinance. It's a special, and correct me if I'm wrong, it's a special consideration for guidelines that are set in place. If this applicant project proposal development says, hey, we're going to step outside those lines a little bit, so we're going to need this conditional use permit to get this passed through. So at this point, when this applicant development comes to the county, I was thinking, how come the county can't then, you know, put this proposal to, whether it's the city council, a community council, or whatever neighborhood it's going to have direct impact on. Because again, we're asking for special privileges outside of the regulations, ordinance codes, zones, what, what have you. So, you know, thinking this through, if that was a process the county had that was transparent and upfront, to say, you know, your neighborhood, there's a project development being proposed. It's going to have, you know, this is what it's going to look like. What do you think as a community in your comprehensive plan, what have you? What, you know, at that point, the county's going to be, you know, transparent with its community, and the community's going to say, yeah, we like it, or no, that doesn't fit, and we are not going to have it because it's going to, you know, disrupt our way of life, our safety, our welfare, our health, you know, what, the environment. But the county will know then that, that they're going to have pushback from their taxpayers on this project that they're going to try to get through on a conditional use permit. And, you know, if it wasn't transparent process like that, we wouldn't go down the line where, you know, the, the determination of non-significance went through, and now we're on to comment period. Because when that happens, now we're just on the defense. The taxpaying citizens are on the defense to now fight against the county to say, whoa, 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 this is wrong, that's wrong. This will hurt, that, that's going to, you know, hurt this, you know, our way of life, what have you. And then we're going to pay money out of our pockets to appeal the county. And then the funny thing about it, I kept just thinking, is now the county has to use its resources, its timeframe, you know, the people we pay to protect us. And they're going to use their resources to fight against their own taxpaying citizens, who if they would have just came to us in the first place, under canvas, I'm going to say right there, you would have known we were pushing back. You knew we were going to push back with the preliminary determination. We pushed back then. And now we're all, you know, whoever has cares that this will really, I mean, I'm not even though how devastating it is, and we all know it's just, it's just crazy to propose in this area where it's proposed. But now we're paying to fight against our own county, so I'm just hoping at some point, the county can really look at who they're working for. Are they working to protect our health, our safety, our welfare, or are they working to do conditional use permits to allow big corporations to come in, do what they want, build what they want, and hurt our environment and hurt our way of life? Because you have a process, a process, Commissioner Anderson, again, tells us to trust, but when you don't tell us about these until you have it to the next stage, and you give us a comment period to fight the county, that's not a good process. Again, I would suggest that we can look at the process. If it's really a process you believe the county needs to have, then tell the citizens upfront when you have a project requesting a conditional use permit. And then I think we'll all have a more transparent government, so please think about that. I don't know how to put this through, but again, it goes through the, the non, you know, significant, non-significant, and boom, we're on the defense, reaching into our pocket after paying our taxes for you to protect us. So thank you for that consideration.
Thank you. We are still in public comment. Are there any other members of the public for the next four minutes? I'm looking. Either unmute yourself, raise your hand, if you haven't heard me say that 50 times. And I, and I would say we are planning on, we are going to be reopening the courthouse tomorrow, starting, and so there would be an opportunity, if folks during public comment next Tuesday or in-person commenting, we will still, as, as the board has said, we are still going to be using the Zoom format. You will still have the opportunity to comment remotely as well, I suspect, forever. I mean, that we're going to, we'll, we'll keep this format. Mr. Chairman. Yes. We've had two people today talk about the conditional use permit process, and I know we've had multiple emails over the last two weeks about that. Mochi has sent out this two-page, the frequently asked questions about the, the conditional use permit process. I wonder if the best thing we could ask for in the future from our planning department is to have a flow chart on how a conditional use permit process would, if that would, if that would help alleviate some of the concerns and questions that we are hearing. Is that something we may be able to do, Mochi?
Of course.
Yeah, I think we either need to have some kind of a public meeting where we can walk them through the process so they understand it, or a flow chart might also help with that. Jumping through all those other hoops, but I think that would at least
help some. Some sort of graphic representation, understanding that part of the training or education is about, many parts of the process, maybe not all of them, are statutorily mandated. There are, it isn't that these are necessarily the rules that we can even change, many of them, but just so that folks understand how the process is laid out. Landry's planning is a very statutorily regulated process in the state of Washington. And I'm sorry, we're using citizen comment time. Is there any citizens, but no one had raised their hand?
Greg is unmuted.
Greg, you are unmuted. Go ahead unless there's somebody else that has not already spoken. Okay, go ahead, Mr. Wagner.
Hi, this is Greg, 303 Fish Ashtray, Goldendale. I just want to address this to Mr. Anderson. I'm looking at his email, and the conditional use process attachment that he put on his email is the two-page frequently asked question brochure that I got from the county website. And I would hope that a conditional use process is more than, you know, where do I get my permit, how much does it cost, when can I start building? There's got to be more to a conditional use process if we're going to permit a industrial-scale solar farm based on two pages of frequently asked questions. There's got to be more to it than that. There's, there's more to baking a cake than there is to that conditional use process. So I would like to see the details. So I would like to see the detailed document. And apparently none exists, so I don't know how we can trust the CUP process if it doesn't exist. Thank you.
Mr. Wagner. Okay, I am going to close out citizen comments unless it's 1:30, so. Thank you all. As I had said, we're, uh, we will be open for in person uh starting tomorrow, and so next week's meeting. Folks will come in with appropriate safety measures, of course. Public health is listening, so. Uh, that takes us to 1:30, a time we've set aside for public hearings. Public meetings and bid openings. Uh, or our business today is a public meeting to consider approval of bound. Approval, uh, I'm going to blame it on the math, uh, boundary line adjustment BLA 2020 dash 12. Uh, first, uh, two parcels in the Murdoch vicinity, the applicants are Bill Osborne, Cheryl Graham and Mike Rockwell. And we will start with a brief staff review.
Okay, alright, uh, boundary line adjustment BLA 2020 dash 12. Is a proposal to adjust the common property line between parcels. Zero two dash thirteen dash seventeen sixty two dash zero zero one zero slash zero zero and. Zero two dash thirteen dash seventeen sixty two dash zero zero one one slash zero zero. In the Murdoch vicinity. Administrative review of this boundary line adjustment has been completed, signatures have been obtained from the road health and planning departments. And treasurer's office. The conditions attached to the preliminary approval have been met, all conditions. If the board finds that it's in the public interest to approve this boundary line adjustment. Motion will be needed to grant final approval of BLA. Twenty twenty dash twelve applicants Osborne Graham and Rockwell.
Thank you. Any questions for Denise? It's up here. Here, looks, looks good, looks like it. I was kind of curious on the map, it almost looked like it was an encroachment. Almost the one house looked like it was pretty close to the, I mean, it was on their lawn.
What they're trying to do is just give it away a little bit.
Yeah, I was right on the property line there.
I mean, I noticed there's a net, no net, no, nothing really changed, they just moved the lines around.
It was a side lot line and normally those are smaller than the front and rear.
Right, but even, you know, yeah, you gotta be the five foot setback, but that's. If that's accurate, it was, yeah.
Mr. Chairman, I would make a motion to approve boundary line adjustment BLA twenty twenty dash twelve.
Second motion.
Do you have a motion in a second on the boundary line adjustment? Any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion passed.
We don't need for future reference, we don't need parcel number in that little spiel we have there.
No, normally, I mean, you can for, it's just a BLA, the the number in code, it's that boundary line adjustment.
We'll encompass those parcel numbers so we don't have to read that.
I didn't just in setting it up, she did read it.
I read it, I figured someone would read it. If you read it, I don't think I need to.
No, but I didn't, so you would.
I figured that.
Right, no, you did, I just wanted to know, we needed to mention it in our motion to accept or not. For me, as a learning experience, that's why I.
You, I mean, you can if you want to, I always figure like a short plat of anything, that number, because that number has all that information. Is encoded into it as far as.
For the record, that is included in the motion that goes in the minutes. Because it includes all that information, which in this case, as Denise read and or a lot of times she reads. And we're the person doing that motion.
Just for efficiency.
I guess I should have read the whole thing, it would have been like faster.
That's good to see.
Alright, got some course to side. Well, it's good to learn though, if you don't know.
Yeah, no, that's excellent, that's, that's question.
Boys, I figure big stuff, uh, you know, I want to know who, when, where and how much.
We usually come up with a question.
I know, and I, I'm being nice today.
It was a question, it was.
Yeah, there was a question, yeah, I usually come up with.
Well, I guess I did, yeah.
Oh, I'm going to go back to the question, I mean, this is, this is over, I'm just questioning. Do we have rules that they can't build their house that close to a property line?
There's a foot, sides are five foot typically.
Well, this depends on the zoning designation, you know, some, some are five, some are twenty, some are fifteen.
Yeah, I wouldn't be a happy neighbor.
It depends on what zoning is, what that building setback for.
Yeah, front yard, backyard, side yard, yeah. I think there is a waiver process to get right to, you know, to zero for some, or you, you know.
Yeah, I would think if your neighbor's fine with it, but.
It's usually more to things, things were hoops and mistake was made.
I think it's usually if it's five foot on both sides, you're ten feet from fire.
Is for fire code is what it's, I think that's what that minimum one comes from.
Cause that's the only thing I don't really see there is how, how much room is there? Yeah, they put the house all the way on one side, but how much room is between the house and the other side to get equipment to the back?
Yeah, and they're looking at that in the building process, making sure that they're reading the site setback, the building setback.
Well, one of the things though is, is so this is on short flat, so we've got pretty good knowledge of where these are. Most places in the county or many places have to be short platted. And so the, the boundaries are still a little wishy.
So there's a lot of boundary wishing, we're here, you know, we rely.
Thanks Denise.
Thank you Denise.
We rely, well, that's why when you submit for your building permit or anything, you sign the certification that to the best of your knowledge, the. Plot, the plot, plan that you submitted with the. Numbers on it, that's what we go off of, and if you're knowingly, you know.
Four years, you'll have me trapped.
Okay, consent, Miss Lainey's report, do we have anything? I, I just hopped over, are you a Miss Lainey's report? It might miss later. Some you don't like to hear from the commission.
I have, we have something on the consent agenda, the A V R F P. And I was talking to Lee, I'd like to extend it to three weeks instead of two, so change the date that it's due. To from, it's currently turned in on the fifth and appears to turn to you on the sixth, and I'd like to make that April 12th.
Okay.
And then April thirteenth for commission meeting, gives another week to. Cook.
Can you talk a little bit about that A V and the changes that are made and what you guys were thinking? I looked over, I, I looked up the, the different. Systems and do we need four cameras in the room? Why, why was that like that?
I don't think we specified the number of cameras.
Well, it was given, he said it was two, uh, two X thirties and two X fifties in each of those.
Oh, the X thirties and X fifties are for other rooms, they're for the meeting rooms and for departments, so that the optional is. That those will be installed and designated rooms to.
Okay, that makes sense. I didn't know if that was what you were looking at for the main room.
No, 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 we left the main room a little bit.
More broad, okay.
Yes, sir. And that's optional, so that, you know, proposal won't be judged based on.
Heck, I was happy with the X fifty just for our room.
So anyway, I just.
Okay, um, so we can. If the board's okay with that, I guess we can just amend that in the consent, as long as we noted for the record. On the paperwork itself, we'll just initial it or something that will change it if we're fine with that, I don't. That's your recommendation, I. Okay.
So you're saying that, uh, that I guess I could make a motion to approve the consent agenda. Um, with the amendment to number eleven. So we're going to accept all twenty one items with the amendment on number eleven.
As long as you understand what the.
The amendment was, was to add a.
A week to the final, yeah.
I will second the motion.
Okay, I have a motion in a second. To the amended consent agenda list, all twenty one items, any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion passes.
Thank you, Commissioner, sorry for the.
Thank you.
Thank you. They are, they are putting the smush tube in so that we can do whatever we want, pretty much, they're just putting extra in.
Or here, yeah, yeah.
My understanding, so we're not worried about timing or anything when they put that. Sheet rock up, we don't have to worry about them not being able to go up to the edge.
So somebody like really small. Which will not be me.
Yes, my understanding that that.
Yeah. Okay, brings us to paying the bills.
Did we not have payroll for this week or?
We do, it did arrive. Our, yeah, it just.
Okay, um. Uh, Mr. Chair, I would make a motion to approve the accounts payable warrant warrants in the amount of. One hundred and sixty eight thousand, eight hundred and eighty three dollars and sixteen cents. And the payroll benefit warrants in the amount of zero. For the date ending March twenty second, twenty twenty one.
Uh, second my motion.
Do you have a motion in a second on paying the bills? Any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion passed.
And then we need.
We do have a pay estimate.
Mr. Chairman, I was making a motion to approve pay estimate number four to Justice Systems Corp. In the amount of twenty four thousand, four hundred and seventy nine dollars and sixty six cents. Which includes sales tax of seven point five percent of one thousand, eight hundred and thirty five dollars and ninety seven cents. And excludes retainage in the amount of one thousand, two hundred and twenty three dollars and ninety eight cents. For our total payment in the amount of twenty five thousand, ninety one dollars and sixty five cents. For the Clickcat County Jail Control Systems Upgrade twenty twenty, C two eight four two zero.
I will happily second.
I have a motion in a second. Uh, any discussion on this?
So, so they've been, they've been had to do a lot more work than they were planning. Is this still within their budget because it was a bid or are they adding extra to it for all the doors and everything else? Um, we know.
Typically, I don't know.
I'm not exactly sure on that, but yeah, it was kind of a. Nineteen fifties wiring harness that they didn't realize they were getting into kind of a thing. So it's been a little messy.
I think typically, I mean, the bid part of it's the bid. But if they're, they probably have.
You can always find a change of record.
Right, somewhere, and that's where they'll get us on some of this stuff, probably.
I would imagine.
So I will say I love their company name, Justice Systems Corp. Sorry, man, I'm getting the look from the clerk. Uh, we have a motion in a second and way too much comment, all those in favor say aye.
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 Motion passed.
I did hear a rumor about a jail tour too, so.
Oh, oh.
For us special people, so.
I'd rather tour it from this side.
Yeah, you actually are required, we're supposed to, we are supposed to visit the facility, I think once a year. That's one of that. And I generally, the rule is, I, it's been a really good day. Yeah, when I do the tour, I don't know anybody personally. Which to date, actually, that's never not happened. Or somebody goes me by D. Uh, elected officials report, prosecuting attorney Canal. Do you have, uh, any items to bring before the board or do you need an executive session?
Well, just want to give you a heads up, we had a two hour pre-hearing conference this morning on the under canvas before the hearings examiner. We do have a um, hearing scheduled for June. On seventeenth and eighteenth, on the June seventeenth will be the. Um, CIPA review, the, the appeal on the MDNS that was filed on day two. Uh, will be the conditional use permit. Uh, process with uh, public comment allowed, um, and so that's, um, we'll be on that Friday on the. Let's see if I got the date right, it's here, the seventeenth, eighteenth, yeah, um, so. Um, so that's a proceeding, um, and I'll give updates if anything significantly changes on that. Um, and then otherwise, that's all I have to report right now.
Great, will that meeting be, will that be a hundred percent virtual, will it be? A hybrid, will there be some in person or are you aware at this point?
Right now, the default is going to be via Zoom, I need to coordinate with your clerk on the availability of your account. Um, it's, you know, it's, it's quite possible that there might be um, some in person, but. Um, to be safe, the hearings examiner and the parties. Um, are moving forward with the assumption that will be virtual. Uh, written comments can be uh, filed um, within a week in advance of the hearings and then. Up to three minutes um, per citizen uh, comment will be allowed. Solely as to the CUP, not the, the CIPA uh, appeal.
So, so is the CIPA, all public comment is closed on that then, is that what you're saying currently?
Correct.
Okay. It'll be on the record.
Yeah, it's on the record, uh, so. Quite a bit of work to do on that, uh, Mochi will be quite busy in the next month, um, working on, um. With, um. This deputy, um, Praskin on, um, compiling the record, preparing the exhibit list and then, um. Uh, Miss Laimland, we'll take the lead on the staff report, uh, so she's going to be very busy with that in the next month. So I just want to make sure the board is aware of that.
So I guess this goes back to the question of the appeal fees. And if it's going to take, I mean, how many hours do you see that taking just preparing?
Lots.
We'll find out.
Yeah, but if we don't, if we don't.
There'll be a substantial time about.
Yeah, if we don't ask her to keep track of her time, then we don't have the information that we need to make an informed decision on what the appeal fee should be. Or the CIPA process. And I know you want to track your time so badly, but I, I see it as, as if you could keep a, a track of those hours that you spend on it, that would really help.
That would be really helpful, yeah. Cause then we have a real world.
Example.
Ground truth.
My argument is not. Necessarily that the, the appealer shouldn't be paying all the fees, my argument would be. Um, it still is. Reimbursement of fees not used, charging multiple people for the same fee. So that's a future discussion, but.
Right, and I guess, um, I know it's difficult, but if you can separate out the time, because the appeal fee is on the CIPA. So it's only the time responding to the, preparing for the CIPA part.
Not the.
The conditional use permit, it would be good to keep track of that as well because. Well, that's, that's the applicant's fees, you know what I mean? And if it takes all this time in order to get the CUP through, we need to know what that time takes to.
Say it could be a good educational for us to have them split, yeah.
Okay.
Which is just more work for her to.
I know.
Take notes.
I'm sorry.
Eventually, we got to get her to go on vacation, but that's a whole other story.
Okay, Mr. Prosecutor, did you are correct, or you, am I hearing correct, you're, that was the only matter you had to discuss with the board?
Yes, Chair.
Okay, thank you. Moves us into.
So I know, uh, David, we had a conversation about the, the dog ordinance uh, information. We had a, you know, just a, a conversation. How far out do you expect we are from getting the PA's opinion request back? Um, I had another, the, the person that brought it up originally asked me again. And so I said I'd, I'd let him know what, what we expect.
Sure, keep in mind that we, looks like the date was requested on March third, I've been presented a, a draft. Um, opinion, uh, response from my deputy, um, and hopefully by the end of the week, I'll be able to review that and. Provide any edits and get that out.
Great, thank you.
Okay, thank you, sir, any other questions for the prosecutor? Nope, okay, that moves us into board pending issues is determined by the board commissioners. You had one this morning, what was that? I already forgot it.
I got one that I wrote down, I don't remember if it was the one from this morning.
No. That makes me feel a little better.
I guess one update is, um, the, uh, Washington State is coming out with the Working Washington four grant program. Um, I talked with, uh, Director McClure this morning about it and how we're going to market that. He's already sent out the information to the chambers, but. In the past, I've always sent out the big, the full list to the business group. Just wanted to run that by you guys, if that makes sense to send it to all of our business contacts about Working Washington four. Um, I haven't done my research on it, uh, but another uh, issue that's come up with regards to that is with the Working Washington three. We sent out, um, we, we created our prioritized list of the businesses that were most affected by it. And the state originally said that they would take our list and they would look really carefully at it. Well, there were thousands and thousands of applications and the, and they, the state. Used a third party to process all the applications for that, and I think they're going to do the same this time. But that third party didn't do what the state said and they were going to look at it, so we had some of the people on our list got funded. And some of the like really businesses that got really hit hard that were priority top of our list didn't get a E B. and some of the like really businesses that got really hit hard that were priority top of our list didn't get a even funding.
Right.
And so the question is, um, uh, with Working Washington Four, we may want to see how this plays out with those businesses, but with the, the dollars that we have coming in with, uh, you know, our federal dollars coming in, if we want to do like what we did the first time around and split out some of that money for those businesses that we feel didn't get funded, but we're really deserving of it in those industries. Um, especially if they didn't get, if they don't get funded in Working Washington Four. So that was just something I wanted to bring up for discussion amongst you guys, what your thoughts are.
Okay. Mr. Christopher?
Uh, I'll hold my thoughts across that bridge when I get there.
Okay, I'd say, I mean, as far as for me, I think, yeah, I think we need to have a, I would be supportive of taking a portion, you know, some portion like we did with the CARES Act dollars where we set some of it, uh, aside for, uh, grants to businesses, I would, I would anticipate I would support that same approach with the the newest federal dollars that we're going to get that we probably, because there's going to be some businesses that fall through the cracks. Uh, I think there's, um, it may be more complicated this time because there's so much money flowing through so many different avenues that we want to make sure, but at the, you would think, oh, will there be, there won't be anybody left for us to help because it, but to me, that actually leaves, when you have multiple things, that's that many more cracks to fall between, and there could be folks that are very deserving, that are high priorities for us that don't get any funding. And I think we're going to be the stopgap because we will have the, um, discretion to use that money, that isn't allowed use. And I think we should, um, have a discussion about, you know, once we actually see it, um, if, when it arrives in the net, you know, because we'll get half, that would be a discussion too, because we're going to get half now and half a year from now. And so that would be a discussion too, as far as obviously the most critical deeds, I would think in the business community here, we would think are now, so we might want to front load that amount and then we, uh, we can talk about it as far as next year and that could be, um, you know, because there's, could still be some, I mean, I know there'll still be, uh, impacts going on a year from now in businesses, but that's, that's a later discussion.
That's what I'm saying, until we have the policy discussion on what we're going to spend that money on.
Right.
I don't want to approve or deny, uh, a piece of that conversation before we hear the whole conversation.
Yeah, no, that's.
And you're, you're right, uh, as far as I understand it, the ones that are falling through the cracks have a different NACIS code. So you could be a bar and a restaurant, or you could be a restaurant slash bar. They have different NACS codes and they, in the third party only pulled one of those.
I don't know anybody that could qualify for that.
A bar and a restaurant?
No, I know somebody who helps with that.
But then also, we've had, we've had, we've had an actual bar that doesn't serve food in the county, who's definitely fallen through the cracks, who hasn't been allowed to be open until the twenty second, so over a year, he's been absolutely closed down. But then didn't qualify, it's like, eh, pretty tough.
They said, I, I understand the plight.
Yep.
I just, uh, don't want to confirm or deny until we have that policy discussion as a policy discussion.
No, I can respond to that, so. Other pending issues, your turn, Paul, and then I'll think about.
Aye, for the first time, and since I started, you don't have anything for you to. We're probably new, but I've forgotten. We're up to two or three pages now, so.
People wanted to talk about that. And we also got this letter, it wasn't known to everybody if you want to do it.
Let's see, we got some time, boy, it's two o'clock.
Well, I think we got some stuff to talk about. In, as we go on. Actually, I'm going to hold off on that. This, when this came out, till I have a chance to talk with the planning director. It's, it's Gord Commission, it's not, it's just the implementation, I want to make sure I understand. Because I don't want to, I don't want to ask now, this, again, as we're, we're hearing multiple times, the planning director has lots and lots and lots on your plate, so.
We should set some time with our schedule to hear about adding staff to that.
Well, I think that's, we're, that's, yeah, really, oh, I was like, really? Yeah, I think we're going to do that. How about right now?
I was so jealous, like, were you doing that on purpose, trying to just lead us out of work, pinning it right in?
All right, unfinished business. So. We are going to have, first, we're going to hear from the planning director of a discussion regarding planning priorities and staffing needs of the planning department.
So I was told to come here to talk about that.
You spend a lot of time over here, like.
Yes.
Maybe we should see, well, you know, in the new building, you're going to be just down the hall. Think.
Different floor.
Are you on the second?
Third floor.
You're on the first or the third floor?
She's got all those conference rooms.
Oh, that's right.
It's in the break room.
You can use Gordy's pole.
Gordy's, yeah, you can use Gordy's pole to break down into the ministers chambers, so it's.
Yeah, so, so my understanding was the board had a discussion, um, potentially adding staff to, to help with the planning departments workload. And I appreciate that, thank you. So, before I can really tell you what kind of need, um, help that I need, I would get some input from the commissioners, if you can let me know what your ambition, um, you know, that, I guess I need some help in setting priorities. So right now on my list, I have ten items in addition to daily, you know, development, review, short plan, boundary adjustment, that kind of thing, like, you know, supervise my staff to keep those moving. Um, so as earlier, we mentioned that I'm going to be working on the under campus, uh, appeal with the public hearing coming up in June, but there's deadlines for submitting reports, records and that kind of thing. We have solar projects and policies, directions that we, we need some input. Um, we are working on the fee schedules that we'll bring it back to the board for discussion. Um, and then the next two items are actually state mandates, they, those are items that we are already late in compliance with the deadline, which is the critical areas update and the shoreline plan update. Um, we talk about, we really need to update our comprehensive plan and sub area plans because those are the basis for all regulations. Um, we talk about zoning ordinance update, which could include, you know, like, short term rentals, hardship homes or planned district that we can have a little flexibility for mixed use. Our environmental policy act, the CIPA ordinance is not updated, you know, there's some questions and is, you know, that we heard during the last few months about how it's not very clear and how a lot of people disagree with the current setup about the comment in a few periods, that how they end on the same day and really didn't provide enough time for people to comment on it. And now, of course, like, we have the mobile home park and RV park ordinance that was adopted and updated in the nineties. They are not the most current standards, with newer development, tiny home and all that, you know, potentially, we could develop like an alternative mobile home park, um, like getaway in Glenwood, you know, that we, we could invest some time in updating those and making more user friendly. And the last but not least, you know, we potentially may have more hearing or pure hearing before hearing examiner. We might want to, um, look into adopting some kind of rules of procedure. So we have something, there's something in writing that we can follow through. So, so this is a ten items that I can think of, um, that all need attention. Some is more urgent because we have a deadline that we have to comply with and others that is, it's going to take some time to get to even the recommendation through the planning commission. So if you, because I can do anything you want me to do, you know, with this. But of course, it would not be a wise decision to start all ten things all at once. So if you can tell me maybe the top three or top five that you want me to work on, then I can look into how can we accomplish that and then I can in turn let you know if we need to have like a full time county person or maybe a contractor or a, a project manager to assist me in getting those items done.
I just put some, some rounded dates here, just off the back of the, the napkin. So solar project policies, a one year process potentially, you go, you know, slow, on the slow end. Working on the fee schedule, six months, shorelines management, since we're halfway through, one year, critical areas, two years. Update the comprehensive plan and add sub area plans, probably five year process. Zoning ordinance update, uh, mixed use, nine month process. CIPA ordinance, probably one year. Uh, mobile home RVs, nine months, uh, appealing here in your examiner, just creating those internal policies three months. So you do that math and that's a whole lot of time.
That goes out past Mochi's retirement date. Which if you give her all ten of those things now, it could be this afternoon.
So, I guess, in setting the priorities, you know, um, the priorities already set, the under canvas is happening, that's, that's, you know, that's a time, probably a huge time suck, right? For the next month, where we've already given her five other things to do today, probably. Including the fee schedule, um, the Shorelines Management Act has been sitting there for what, three years now, two years sitting there? Uh, have you even started on the critical areas ordinance?
Yes, so we did start the critical area ordinance, we do have a draft, but that there were some discussions during the CIPA process, so I have to review the, the CIPA. So just, just for the CAO, we do have a consultant on that, on retainer that can help us with that, so for the CAO, it's actually like a contract for both the CAO and SMP. Uh, because the shoreline plan, we still have a CIPA appeal that needs attention to. And potentially, I'm hoping the SMP, we might get some grants funding opportunity from ecology and we won't find out until maybe May or June issue. So I had a conversation with our consultant. The recommendation I got from him was maybe we can amend our agreement, our contract agreement. So he can shift his focus to get the CAO moving forward while we wait for the SMP, because the SMP itself would include CAO element, and so if we can get the CAO done, hopefully, then we can incorporate those by reference, it will save us some time, I'll resolve the CIPA issue.
Do you anticipate an appeal on the CIPA for the CAO though?
I don't know.
So if there's a good likelihood, can we get a twofer with our hearings examiner on two appeals at the same time on the CIPA?
I think that. Different, yeah, I think that issues will be different and I, I would recommend not to try to.
Tie it together.
That's me, I'm, I'm not answering this question that she wants answered, because I feel that she knows better the answer than I do. So I just, I personally, I trust wherever she wants to go with what's first and what's last of her agenda.
And then just my, my personal comment on this is I do appreciate, you know, you, you know, that I need some extra help. But I also want to spend my time wisely, so there's a, a long range goal is if we want to think about in the long run and, you know, for succession plan for someone that we can actually train in house to someday be the director. And then we also have a short term goal because we have all these items that we need to get done. And, and I hesitate to, um, spend my time to try to train somebody new to do this, because it does take time if you want this person, you know, know how to do things and, and learn everything that that, that is, um, applicable to, to the planning department or to the county situation. So some work, we can certainly hire, um, a county staff to do. But right now with my current staffing, I don't think I have anyone that can. They already have the, where they have the workload and I don't think I can pull any one of them to get help me with this items.
Okay. I guess from my perspective, I, I agree with Mochi that, that we're not trying to hire somebody if we were trying to fill this in. Uh, at a base level, we're trying to bring somebody who's a professional planner that can act as an assistant.
Right.
Because all of this is more than one person's full time job, yet she still has training and all the regular stuff that she does in comp of, you know, anything else that comes in. To me, this is more than a full time position that would be somebody with planning experience, hopefully elsewhere.
Right.
And I don't like spending all that when we know there's that much workload. I don't like just hiring it out to somebody who isn't going to be there, because we also have to worry about succession and all that stuff.
Right.
I think I'm gonna, I would, I'm going to defer really heavily to you as far as the planning director, I do think I'm trying to find a, me, you know, it's like, I think the SMP, the critical areas ordinance, we already have a, we have a contractor that we've been working with and those are kind of ongoing. Those are critical, even the criticals areas, they are on time, you know, we will be the last shoreline plan to be updated in the state. Um, I don't, I don't say that, well, actually, I'm going to strike that, never mind. Because, yeah, never mind, uh. So I could, I mean, that's definitely something that we could, um, you know, activate, reactivate, get that contractor spun back up. Because they, that person knows what they're doing on that and we've got a, and I, I know we have to get that. I do think we do need to start talking about, as you said, succession, not necessarily use success, because I see, I don't see things in the planning world in this county getting simpler ever. This is not an unusual ti, I think this is the normal time, I think we are seeing, we have growth pressure in this county, I think, like we've never seen before, and I think that's going to continue. And I think we're, you know, if we are successful, you know, we, some of this, um, growing pains are things that we've asked for, that we have, we have kind of hoped for as far as the, and I think we need to recognize that that's going to, that's going to keep going and so I, but I do, I do like the idea of us making some investments in a person that's going to be here long term, so that we're, we get to, just like, you know, we have made, I think they did really wise investments, but we've made investments in you and your staff and you're an asset to this county right now and, um, you know, over the last, you know, ten, twelve seems like longer time, and I think we need to do that with, uh, some other high level staff, it's, um, the question I'd have, I guess, for, for human resources is like, you know, how, that's not going to be a short term process, that's going to be, um, I think we need to kind of think about that as far as what that looks like and then what kind of, you know, because this is not, I mean, planning high level, you know, trained, because you, there is, no matter if we, if we go and find the absolute most gifted hardworking person planning that's got all this experience, when we bring them here and we plug them in, it's still going, you're still going to have to do some training with them, because we, I think every county has some unique kind of ways that we do things. And we have, we have to learn the Click attack county way, just as we all do. And so there, it's, I want to be sensitive to that as far as to you, because you're correct, you, you don't want to have to take on training somebody right now, but I think that is, once we get some of this other stuff hopefully shifted where you can at least breathe, uh, using the contractors, that that is something that I think we need to get started on, because it's, you, again, you. you, again, you need the help and I would rather invest in a a human uh that's got to stick around.
Or at least potentially stick around.
I know, you can't make them, try those letters of indenture.
Dollars to a company that's gonna take the dollars when they're done.
Oh, you feel the disturbance?
It's just like yellow alert. Careful, yes.
Talked a few times about some different options, but I think she will bring to you or an option she'll bring to you. Salary-wise, we're one of the highest senior planners pay in the gorge. And which surprises me a little bit.
How come nobody wants to work for us? What are you doing over there? I have high standards.
Year unless things have changed because the planning in the gorge is different than anywhere else. So where it might take a year to onboard a senior planner, to onboard a senior planner in the gorge may take longer because of uniqueness. So it is a lot of work on Mochi's part. Isn't that why we don't do any planning within the gorge?
The gorge, so we don't, yeah, that would add a whole. Unfortunately, the things that happen outside our borders impact us from a planning perspective. As far as priorities, as far as for of those, I think your ten, I can't, I mean, I could probably think of a couple more, but that wouldn't be any higher priority than those. Just some scenic area stuff that's just more, not us, but having more engagement. No, no, about just engagement and so that we
Oversight?
Well, just so, because we still have the citizens that are doing land use planning in the scenic area are still our citizens. And we have in the past have tried to help shepherd mentor act on their behalf, you know, and Mochi has been wonderful at that. But again, it's more, I don't know where you'd ever get a person. I just want, I guess, that on the list of these skills that this person is gonna have, that they could also know a little something about that to help you know, shepherd some of those through as far as from the citizen's perspective. Because that has been really helpful to folks, but it's, that's, that's basically Mochi right now and you can't, you just can't do that along with everything else.
I couldn't do it on everyone, but if that's some that is
Yeah, yeah, you need to learn how to say no. Because every one of them, right.
And part of that is all of our fault is now that we're trying to get some of these things moving. And it ends up putting way too much on one plate, so.
But like you said, it's not going to get easier. I think we're gonna have more operations and having it more difficult.
And I don't want to burn her out until she's ready to retire, so.
Yeah, so I would say those, that, I mean, the comprehensive plan, like the total overall of that, I think is absolutely necessary. We have to do it. I think we have to do it in a, I think we need to have our eyes open about how what that process is going to be and how we're going to do it. Because I really do think we need to do it with engagement with the communities, with the, you know, really, and it's different. You cannot just do a general update and, you know, have a hearing in White Salmon and a hearing in Goldendale and, you know, oh, we're done. Yeah, it doesn't work that way. I mean, I I like that idea of how we had done the sub-areas before where we centered those around the communities. I like it except to do it right, that's going to be really resource-intensive because you have to have really strong, the only way I'm going to support that is with strong facilitation where it's, it's the county that is leading the effort in the community as far as with that engagement, but it is I've always been and it's got me in trouble. I do believe in local land use planning, even though it's, it's messy and ugly and but that's, I don't like, like, I hate it when Olympia tells us what to do and I'm not going to do the same thing as far as I think communities should plan for themselves with guidance or direction from the county because we're the ones that have to make sure it follows the law and that it's that you can administer it and that we can actually implement what you want. Or it's not a conflict with some of our other county-wide goals that we have, because we, we've seen that before. Communities where we spent, you know, I don't know, twenty million dollars for a wastewater plant that they don't want any, any growth.
So the path forward, would it be to direct HR to come up with a position that would match what we're looking for? Would it be directing HR and Mochi to work together to figure out how we're going to get there?
And a time, and a realistic as far as again, I think that in the short term, you know, in the next six months or so, I think you have plenty to do. Again, who who can we get, again, consultants on board, get them spun back up? Not that they haven't been, but we have, we've been kind of idling while we, you know, COVID kind of did that to some stuff.
But you know, spending the consultant's time over time right there.
Well, that's me with pushing forward the comprehensive plan. It doesn't mean she has to start working on that tomorrow. Just know that it, I'm not gonna sit here and still have that on our list in ten more years.
No, but I think that to me is one of those things that we need to
But we need to know we're gonna do that here soon enough and be prepared, and that's what this is doing. Is hopefully giving us the staff that once they get a couple of these near things off can start pushing.
I guess the question is, is how are you doing at training and managing your staff? Are you able to do any training for your staff to help them grow currently, or are you just dealing with all these fifty thousand-foot big projects? And we need to get some of your staff sent to some training now that the world's opening back up. How do you feel about that?
I'm always available to my staff and I think the best way to learn is really is by doing it. And we do have weekly staff meeting that staff can bring whatever issues that they have or encounter interesting cases, whatever that might be, for group discussion. And I have positive feedback from my staff. And I think we are doing okay with that, friend. I do allow them to go on to training, whether that's in person or through the webinar, you know, to to learn basic about CIPA, how it's working, critical areas and whatnot. And they can always present, you know, what kind of training that they're interested in, bringing back for my approval and things like that. So I I think I think for the most part is working okay. It it's just that I I'm trying to to make sure that we cross-train each other because we have a small office and each individual planner have their own type of workload, you know, subdivision or conditional use permit. And they really don't have much opportunity to touch on the other things. And so if the particular person is on vacation, then you all come back to me because I have nobody else really know how to handle those. And that's not good. So that's why we have those, you know, weekly training and occasionally we might have a planner trying to assist in working on a shoreline project, even though that may not be the primary case load. And that's the 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 best that I can do at this moment. So, you know, if you have any input on your ears.
Is there, not with the staff training, which I completely want to support Mr. Anderson there as far as anything that you need, then get it, avail yourself of it. I'm wondering too, as we obviously are hearing through, you know, public comment from folks where there is great interest in our planning processes and I think rightly so. And I think folks, that's not something unless you've been through it where you don't understand how the processes work. It is very difficult if you don't, you know, you don't live in that world to understand how all those processes work. Does the state, is the state still doing the, you know, the like the short course that's available to the public? Because that, I, you know, I've been through it a couple of times back when I was a planning commission member and then after I was a commissioner, it was really gave me a really good foundation in just basic planning processes in the state of Washington. You know, it's, you know, four or five-hour course that they brought somebody in. And is the state still doing things like that or could we ask that?
Commerce is still doing the shortcuts for local planning. They actually have those remotely now. There are some courses that's available, you know, on Commerce website. They have videos that people can watch at any time. But we, of course, we can sponsor one because we we had one, I want to say, five or six years ago. And so if we are interested, then, and also we have, you know, newer planning commissioners and all of the members. So I'm I might be able to coordinate with Commerce and have one that actually, you know, specific to kind of the county and have it available to anyone who's interested.
I know, I I went through it where it was just, you know, a video that you watched, it wasn't really interactive. I, I mean, if Mochi can find the link to that or the user login and password for that, we can send it to Dan and in our new planning commission members, send it off to CSE since they're asking about it. They would definitely help people. Just add it to our list.
You know, and I would see, you know, once things open up more, maybe we could, maybe next year we could talk about it in person. Training, because it is, you know, I, you know, I'm sure it's would be really useful, but it's nice when you you can have the, you know, interaction, especially the last one I went to, the person was really knowledgeable on Click-Attack County-specific stuff and we were able to ask questions and there was a couple, there was a couple of planning.
Well, I think you learn better that way than virtually anyway.
I mean, virtual is better than nothing. But again, put that on the later list.
So I guess I'm looking at what she asked for direction, what she needs to work on. And there's the under-canvas appeal in June that is required. Next up is is that we have sixty days to hold a hearing on the solar.
Yes, I was, I was getting to that.
That wasn't on our list.
Right, that's solar project policies. And so as I understand it, we have sixty days to hold the hearing to prove that the moratorium is valid, that there is the emergency or purpose for it. According to the RCWs. And then if we move from there, then we either have to implement the moratorium and if we continue the moratorium, I would assume that we have to be working
We have to be working.
Towards it with the timeframe on implementing an ordinance, other than otherwise, you just set a moratorium. So that's, that's really high up there. If we're also working on this STR stuff through the building department and we can get the ordinance sitting there, well, then it would be nice to follow up with the zoning side of it so that people can use it. Otherwise, we're sitting in this limbo, which we've always been in the limbo. So that would be my third. Shorelines and critical areas updates. We're on a timeframe, but nobody's, you know, kicked us yet too hard under the table.
We got the COVID timeout.
That would be part of the the whole code, would it, would it make sense to do it all at the same time or no?
No, those are two different requirements regardless.
Different babies.
Different babies. They do have a, I mean, they'll, they'll feed into the overall.
In terms of, you know, the appeal for hearings examiner setting local procedures, I see that as really important. If we're gonna have to go through it with the solar side as well too, it would be nice to have that. And and I see the start on that is just to come up with that flow chart of how it works that shouldn't take too long. And so I would say we're we're getting started on it and that's probably going to take a hiatus. And then that comprehensive plan, I don't see any way that with her regular workload, she could ever touch that to begin with. And so I would say that that can't happen until we have a assistant director or some sort of a high level that can start taking some of these things off the plate, whether whether she starts working on the comprehensive plan and they are managing the day-to-day or if it's that person's doing the special project and she's managing the day-to-day. But that's the only way I see that getting done.
I would agree.
So you're looking for direction, direction.
We can make her work more hours every week.
What about the fee schedules? Where do you see that? The fee schedule update.
Well, I didn't want to say that because then I'm, then I'm starting to mess up my logical flow because that fits, you know, somewhere in there. I, we have the fee schedule.
So I just talked, the fee schedule is updated by the next time somebody appeals something. Whenever that is.
But I think, I mean, personally, when I look at the fee schedule and I look at the costs that she's gonna, the time that it's going to take her to deal with this appeal, appeal on something that's, you know, would have been a four thousand dollar appeal, could have been a four thousand dollar appeal. To me, that proves right there that if it's a a large project like that, that that appeal is probably valid in terms of that, the cost, that cost. And people have gotten smart. I mean, if the community wants to appeal it and create a friends group like they did in this instance, that's one way to come up with that money. But it also shows the buy-in if you're doing that. It's a huge cost on both sides.
And I, oh, I don't even want to say it out loud, but I do that a lot, yeah. Any fee that the county imposes, there is always the opportunity for folks to request a waiver from us. And so my personal opinion is, again, I'm pretty swayed before that the fee schedules for those big projects are probably appropriate to the level of the expense that we're going to have into it. I, and there is the ability, if there is a community that really felt like in the board thought that there was kind of an overriding more of a public policy discussion to be had because of whatever the appeal was, we could entertain, you know, reducing that or doing something. And so I don't think that the the idea is that folks are was that the prosecutor?
Yes, that's my implant.
From what, from what I'm hearing is if I'm hearing correctly anyway, is that there's really one of us, that only one of us that thinks there's an issue there. And if that's the case, I don't mind being the odd man out being outvoted on whether we spend any time addressing it. So if you guys think it's a waste of time, I don't, but feel free to her not go forward and waste time.
With the appeal thing, I think what we said earlier is if you can keep track of your time on this appeal, then we can put that in that hierarchy based on how much time and money we spent just of your time dealing with that appeal.
Right, but we had her going back and looking at all of the fees, not just appeal.
Which will help though, like if she's, if she keeps track of the time spent on the appeal and then then we can figure that out. We can find out what the, what the application cost should be for a multimillion-dollar project based on her time and what the appeal fee should be based on her time so that we can cover.
So it sounds like you don't get to take that off your list.
That's fine, I just need to, because the last week's workshop, my direction was to
I I don't think you should. I think what I'm, what I'm hearing, at least from two of us, is that we're gonna hold off on that part of it, but we want you to in this under-canvas appeal, to just collect the data as far as on you and the stat, you know, the what's going into this thing, because then based on that, we'll have the the bigger discussion on the rest of it, I think. I think, I'm, I'm not saying I'm not interested, I am. I just think it's a lower priority for me right now compared to all the I just think it's a lower priority for me right now compared to all these other things that we've got on.
And, and just a comment, I do appreciate that. But we do have a few filed, you know, not necessarily on multi-wing projects, you know.
Right.
Not too long ago, we had a CBA appeal on the MDNS way too long short. That one was, you know, presented by the commissioner, so.
What was, uh, what did we charge for that?
That was two hundred dollars because the, the.
Like I said, my, my argument on the appeals is not that, you know, some big giant, you know, this under canvas thing that goes before may not end up at eight thousand dollars. My argument is on a smaller project, are we charging eight thousand on some items? That only costs four and we're not refunding the other four. Those to me are legal issues that could get us in hot water and those are what I want to address, not. Those are what I would like to, yes, um, handle far more than, than, you know, making some CBA appeal for under canvas two hundred dollars and the county covers the other ten thousand. So.
All right, do you have enough direction?
No.
I don't think the list got shorter.
No, well, no, I think we identified.
We identified.
Short term, I mean, the list was already. Under canvas, that has to be done, so that's obviously priority one right now for you. Shoreline.
No, before shoreline, you don't have solar.
Solar, because we've got the ninety day, their sixty day. And for me, I wouldn't spend. The point of the hearing is to take testimony to determine what the next step is. So let's not anticipate what the next step is, that until we know what that step is. And so really what we need now, and I believe you, you have a draft as far as the actual um resolution setting or ordinance. The ordinance setting the moratorium that sets the date, we'll have to have some discussion about the, you know, hearing, the dates for the hearing, what are, how are we gonna advertise? We had some questions today from uh citizens as far as, no, I can, I can pretty confidently answer. We don't send notices to every citizen in the county.
Have other plans too.
And no, I mean, we, we don't do that, we will advertise and we will in our typical ways that we would for any ordinance, land use ordinance. And there is, there is a um. Assumption of responsibility from citizens to keep themselves informed and. As far as what's going on and they're, they're afforded an opportunity to comment. Um, I'm, I'm not gonna go door to door and ask people to comment on, on things. And so based on what we hear at that hearing. We will determine what the next steps are and that will definitely likely have an impact on that list at that time.
Right. As I said, I hate, I hate to give you. Numbers in order on that list because it's only gonna last a month to change, so. If I said, take your best guess at it.
I was telling you, next emergency comes up.
Exactly.
Right.
I will have another discussion with Rob and then we'll figure something from this.
Okay, yeah, as far as the, the, the personnel piece of it, definitely.
That's gonna be a hard word.
Thank you, Mochi.
Yeah, thank you.
And then if you want to go like on a scouting trip to, you know, interview potential Maui. I heard they have really good land use. And Maui, you wanna, you didn't need to go, yeah.
Sounds like awesome.
Yeah, yeah.
We'll take it on a solid waste budget, it will be awesome.
Yeah.
Oh, hi Ruby.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you. Hey, next up, economic development, natural resource director. Mr. McClure discussed refilling, it sounds like unfortunately, that's what we're discussing, uh, office manager position.
Just for note, uh, recessor is gonna be scheduled.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, that's okay. Soft pedal this a little bit, hoping Rob will get back.
Yeah.
Can we, you have a minute?
Sure.
You better find something else to talk.
Yeah. How are things? I've seen your Rob.
Yeah, I've seen your best, it's, it's not bad, it's better than mine.
Your, while Rob is out there, you got, uh, yeah, it's, it's, it's unfortunate that we do need to have that position filled. I think we've taken, I'm not sure it's an opportunity, but the time to, to relook at that a little bit. Quickly get to where I would like Rob at here. Maybe on a side discussion, I was listening earlier uh before I came over and there was a mention of the funding that's coming. And it'd be interesting to maybe bring to you guys some, some thoughts on that, it's like a chance to, chance to think of it. There's probably some opportunities to provide some needed support businesses, what form that takes and the timing of that. Need. Yeah, I think a discussion there. Understanding that there's a broader, you know, what are we gonna do with this wisely?
As I say, I would rather have the other discussion first without having to do that, but I can be outvoted again.
He finally reminded me what was on my board pending.
Oh, too late, nope, it's over.
Well, till Rob gets in here. So that was, I, I don't know if it was sent to all of us, but the um mill, the ClickItApp mill. Uh, we got the authorization, um, the way it was written that uh we can go in and try to get that covenant, our piece removed. And I talked with, uh, with Director McClure about that and that looked like it's Public Works's baby to put in for that. Didn't talk to Gordy about it, but I would love if we could get started on that process of getting at least our portion. The covenant pulled off so that we can do whatever we want.
Right. No, I, that's really good news because it sounds like, yeah, no further action means actually no further action.
And where can we bring it right now? I've got it, what's that, I can't, I just read it quickly. Is that no further action at an industrial site?
No, I think it's the, remove the covenant.
Yeah, from ours, from.
The neighbors.
Property it stays.
Or portions of their property anyway, so, yeah, if you get that down where. Uh, we have people to be, that might be interested in that property, gonna look at it and have confidence.
Right.
That it's clear of legacy contamination would be, would be great.
And did anybody send that to Gordy as well, the, that document?
Yeah, yeah.
Okay, so we just need to get.
Add that on the list for next Tuesday to make sure he's aware of that, what's the next step?
We were, we were on a call with Department of College and some other interested parties, you know, a little landowners. And we did request to go to the board. I think it was, the initial was maybe addressed to Richard Fawkes, but it should have gone to you guys as well.
But excellent news, that's been a.
But we might have.
Multi-decade.
Take him to get it going though.
Yeah.
Okay, Rob is back, so anyway, we've taken a look at that, uh, this position provided support to Ruby Solid Waste Department as well as. Natural Resources and Economic Development. This position was functioning high, we were looking at doing a reclass and emphasizing very strong uh office management and accounting capabilities. Even before COVID, we were building in terms of workload there where it was getting crazy. Now that COVID has passed, I, I look at that last year as almost like a tidal wave where the tide has gone out on a lot of programs, you know. The state agencies put projects on the hiatus and, and so all of, a lot of stuff just sort of fell to the wayside. We had the, the grant programs that kept us very busy, but all those other programs are starting to come, come back and so we're, we're backlogged. So what I, what we've been talking about is maybe can we get authorization from the board to take a look at. An office manager two position. And, which is, this is currently an office manager one, so we went to an office manager two. And then get a clerical administrative assistant in there. And I would be, we're asking for a one year on that to reassess once we get out of this COVID, whether that. Workload is there continuing or, uh, you know, do we, are we out of the woods? And can move forward without that?
I believe part of the conversation was, you know, to keep it open though, when we put it out for um, for announcement, to keep it open for manager one or two. So that we might be able to get some pre-qualified candidates. Uh, my department pays for twenty-five percent of Kirsten, um, which is kind of like twenty-five percent of two people. All in one tag, but, um. And that, that roughly comes down to about seventeen thousand um a year. So um he kind of came up with some numbers where, um, like with the clerical, you know, I would be paying a portion of that as well as being able to have some of that money. Overage to go towards the management, uh, the office manager position as well.
Just, just so I understand, this, the request though, it would be a net increase of FTE. A one FTE.
One FD. For one year.
For one year. Okay, we just want to make sure we're all.
That's just funny to me, like in one year, we're gonna go, yeah, sorry, we're done with you, we're gonna let you go now. I don't see that happening, so.
I'd like to say all we've done before, but I can't recall.
We did it over COVID with, who we brought in and she was there for six months.
Yeah.
Right, that's true. I, I think.
Well, I would say couldn't you hire a bit of a casual that way and.
To put an HR speak.
Yeah.
He would need to, uh, verbal proof to revise his org chart and add an office manager two to the box. So it'd be a one or two, so he can have the option. We would not add the casual clerical admin position to the box because it would be casual, I mean, it wouldn't be added to the org chart. Because it's only limited for a year, have to come back to you, be reapproved. Before it could be added permanently, so there would be another step to move that up to a permanent position or a regular position. And we talked about, I re, we recommended that he post a clerical out of one, two, or three to give him the full range of when he got recruiting and looking through his skillset for the clerical. You know, if we do it, if we do one, he'll find a two or three, if you do a three, he'll find a one or two, so. He can only have one, but give him the full range of the clerical experience to, as he's advertising, so he has the. And then we estimated if uh the office manager one or two should, should balance out. There's a grade higher than it is now, so with nine months left in the year, so that should be a wash financially. But the cost of adding the casual will be what did we come up with?
It's about thirty-five, thirty-seven thousand.
Because it'll be a DRS, it'll qualify for retirement, we'll have to pay the nine percent for that, so. About thirty-five thousand, if it's, that was for nine months, that was for the end of the year, I didn't realize you wanted to go twelve, so. That'd be next year's budget.
And we use these uh COVID monies to pay that thirty-five thousand for the casual.
Well, the commissioners can do anything they choose.
It's direct or indirect, we could, yes.
The initial direction was you didn't want to, you didn't want to incur expenses that went on past the first year, but.
Sounds like this, this is not going on past the first year guaranteed.
Yes, so.
Where are you gonna house them?
That's gonna be an interesting dad.
So, um, I actually have room in my office that I'm more than willing.
Your new office or your old office?
Oh, the old office, because in my new office, I don't have any room.
That's really helpful for the next little bit.
But we.
Your, your, your old office is going to the fairground very, very soon.
Um, in the new building, we, we actually have some cubicles. Um, so there'll be, there'll be room to house and of course, we'd have that main person to be in that front office as we have Kirsten, you know, now, so. Um, but until we get there, um, we can make some concessions on how we're going to, you know, kind of share some space. We've been pretty good at sharing the space that we've had and, um, you know, it's, it'll work.
And, and I've got two staff that are splitting their weeks, working remote, working in office, so. We could dance between those two offices.
And we've been balancing out pretty good with that too.
What about the other position for economic development? How does that fit into this and when are you looking at that? Not to put you on the spot or anything.
If you hadn't, I was going to.
Other position?
Yeah, there's a, he has a, he has an approved position that hasn't been filled.
Oh.
Another special, another Richard.
Which was, when did this, that, that we didn't have before, is the new position that hasn't been?
Last, last year I budgeted for a new economic development specialist and then COVID hit. So we put a lot of natural resources on hiatus and Commissioner Anderson came over and worked in economic development a lot. And basically filled that time and then we got it part-time, so.
He wasn't scoring those, you know, Washington grants for salmon recovery here.
So the funding I put in there was.
You were working in.
Position basically meant to help for, with the temporary hire and with uh. Christopher Anderson billing to economic development instead of natural resources.
Okay, so I'm trying to, just to make sure I know what I'm talking about or understand the situation. You now have permission to have one more FTE than you had a year ago and the year before that and the year before that. And this is for an ask for a second new FTE.
I, I budgeted it last year, I did not come in and get authorization. I did not have authorization to add it to my staff, yeah, that was a conversation, a final.
Okay.
The money was put there.
Put the money there.
But last, last year, we were directed to maintain staffing levels and budgets, no, no increases. So I did not put those dollars into this year's budget.
So the new position was not put in this year's budget?
That's correct.
Oh, okay, I thought you did keep it in there, probably under the hundred twenty thousand.
There's, there's still the need because we've got an economic development strategy that's not being implemented as aggressively. As it should be in my opinion, and I think in terms of the EDA board's recommendation, that recommendation for the additional staff came a couple of years ago. We've just been sort of holding off, so I think we've got a conversation to have on that. But right now I've got this immediate thing and if I've got to pick between the two, I've got to fill this office manager and administrator.
So you're saying you're not gonna come back asking for the.
No, I didn't say that.
I said, that's another conversation. This year.
We, we'll see about this year, hopefully.
So I'm not having heartburn with the office manager part of it at all. My heartburn is with the other part of it.
Which other part, just I understand.
Sounds like all the other part.
All the other part.
With what I know of our budget right now. And the decisions we're gonna have to be making this year and possible future considerations with solid waste. Fiscal responsibility is important to me.
And I'm hearing those, it's sensitive to what you're saying.
Our.
Challenge before, yeah.
Right. The um. Transfer from the O nine account that's now funding a portion.
Right.
What's that number looking, has looked like, because that was part of the discussion.
I'll have to go back and take a look. Down, it's down a little bit in terms of specifically twenty percent of private sphere, previous year, I think. Last year was down a little bit.
Right.
But we also got forty thousand, but that's compensating for how much we're putting in the.
Right.
Small business development center person.
Right, no, that was a wash because that was, that was to pay for that. Okay.
Yeah.
Well, I would say.
Staff person, I'd like to see how that SBDC person plays and.
Person plays in the mix.
That's a really good answer, that's a good answer. Because it may be unnecessary if we, I mean, we are.
Oh, it's not.
But we are, we're adding another person, another FTE, we're splitting it with Skamania, but it's a, it's not a hundred percent, but it's sixty percent.
Yeah, some of what they're doing and maybe.
You're getting, you're, you are actually bringing point six FTE online in the county. Right now already, so that's.
How does that affect our workload?
Exactly.
I'd like to see that a little bit.
Yeah.
You know, the funny thing is, he's never been, he's one of the few that's never been an empire builder.
No. No, the only thing he defends really well is his budget. As far as he never, because he has all these different, you know, little piles or.
I didn't say he didn't have tentacles.
No. And so we'll say, we'll, we'll get, you know, asked for things and we'll like, and you're like, oh, yeah, yeah. You can pay for that out of this little, and then before the end of the year, he's always very, during the budget process, reminding us that we need to put that money back because we borrowed it, basically.
I've never had to have a conversation to you about my red ink.
No.
Man, I think he asked for a vehicle issue.
No. Yeah. You know, that's gotten easier because it was not that long ago that department was not on the VRN, it was, which never made any sense to me. And so literally you had to, it's like, well, it's, it's worn out, you, we have to buy you a whole new vehicle, not a little bit at a time. And so I was glad when we got rid of that.
That's why we didn't have a nice vehicle.
That's right. It's like, come back next year.
I'll be honest, replacing Kirsten, if you hire somebody tomorrow, you've got the training and all that. As well as you have the efficiencies of knowledge and understanding all these different things. I don't see how one person can step in there and replace it. And so the clerical for nine months or whatever at the end of the year makes sense to me. Because when we were going through COVID and we had that clerical person in there, they were both going full time. And now that we're ramping all the other programs back up, I think you're gonna see that there's six plus months behind, they've done a lot of stuff and they need that.
I think I need to recognize too here that even with the we're, that, that position has been functioned at a very high level, in my opinion. And I think that I'm going to, at least for the near term, going to be, you know, looking to the auditor's office to provide a little more support or, or be putting more weight on them than before. And, and public works has always been helpful, so I may be leaning on them a little bit more than I've had to over the last several years. So there's still going to be some effect there, getting someone up to speed.
Yeah, at least for me, I'm, I'm fine with office manager, the, you know, one, two, or, you know, to the two. I do see the need in the, at least for the short run, in the extra clerical work and I can support that. And then we'll, we'll look at it. I do want to have a conversation later though, because I, I think this is eligible for, for COVID, or I don't know what we're, I don't know what we're calling the latest thing, but the.
Stimmy?
Stimulus, yeah.
Other money.
Other money. So I think we'll be fine there. I do want to have a discussion and this would have to go back to the case of Tita about one of the things, and this would, we were gonna have this conversation regardless, just because of the pressures long-term sustainably on the county's budget about that 20%, you know, having to maybe adjust that to help pay, you know, because it was zero, we didn't, we just paid 100% of the cost. And we have, you know, there are jurisdictions that their departments 100% funded from, from those, from those dollars. You know, we're only, we're only tapping 20% of that fund and we, we might need to change that number, I'm assuming up. So that it's, it's helping to fund a little bit more of this and take some of the pressure off the landfill, general fund, well, landfill. Because those, those resources are not inexhaustible or assured. Based on our conversation last week.
Some of the, some of the discussions on the.
You hear Brett being sucked in all over.
Big budget that we might be getting an increase in our EDA grant if the budget moves through, so hopefully that.
Yeah, I heard that yesterday, too, that they're, they're talking how much, shoving some more to the ADOs.
Maybe another 25 to 50,000.
So some, yeah.
Perfect, it covers our clerical person. At least his portion of it.
Right. Well, we know where her money comes from.
Again, office manager, fine. The temporary, my thinking was paying it out of the COVID dollars because I don't want to make a budgeted item in there. Because for me, this is a short-term position until we hit budget season and prove it otherwise. Because I'm, you know, if, if the budget's great, fine, if the budget's bad, hiring employees is a bad idea and I will be a no on reallocating funds to that position.
So if there's an office manager two position, is there any chance that you can talk to the departing person to apply for an office manager two position?
Talk to whom?
Parting person to apply for an office manager two.
I think that ship has sailed.
Yeah, yeah, once, once you make a decision, then it's, the die's pretty much cast.
Well, and I'm, I guess questioning that.
This is really on, as it, as, are the lines off the dock, are you sure?
Went over that position and readjusted it and came out with the pay scale, how are we now looking for someone to fill that position at a higher pay scale?
Apples and oranges.
Yeah. Intends to bring forward that new position at a later date, put on his org chart, just to have it on there and not fill it. But that's at a grade 40, the office manager two's a grade 38, currently the office manager's one's a 37. So the higher it is considerably higher than.
Yeah, so that's, that's, so it's a no. The ship's sailed and it's not coming.
See, that answers my question in part of that.
I thought two was bigger than one.
One, yeah.
So maybe it's less than.
Yeah.
Another one.
We still have workload issue.
Okay, so for the resolution, we'll have to put together, can I get a clarification? Is, is the clerical position 12 months or is it due to the year, which would be nine months? It's 12 months, which is, that's what you're requesting, fine, we'll have to go through the budget process for three months of the next year, so, which will be building shortly.
I'd rather stay in the budget year if we, because we don't, we don't know. I mean, I mean, I know it makes it hard, but it is a temporary casual to Commissioner Christopher's concern, it isn't going on the org chart, it doesn't.
Right.
There's, it's, it's a temporary until it goes through the, so it's, so it's really not even nine months. Yeah, I guess it is nine months, I guess this is March, but you're, I mean, maybe you'll have it filled.
When we go through the budget, it wants to be extended, then we can address it then.
Yeah. I mean, you'll submit your request then, as far as like we do for many staff people.
Good luck filling the positions.
Yeah.
We get, we get good polls on clerical admin position.
Oh.
Been pretty successful.
Okay.
We got a verbal.
And they'll follow up with some paperwork.
And writing. So, so you need written authorization to advertise? Typically, typically you allow us to post while we're bringing back.
Yeah, yeah, no, go.
Go forth and do your work, we will get.
If we change our mind, then it's, well, never mind, we changed our mind.
I know he said it to me for five years, so I get to say it.
Commissioner, if you have time before you go, I have a question about the EVA. Yeah, if you can stop by and not, I can follow you.
Sure, I can stop by.
Thank you all.
All right, thank you. And the assessor has rescheduled her discussion on her office, potential office reward.
I guess the HR manager had to leave the afternoon and she was not gonna be here. They will schedule.
Okay. Okay. Any other topics?
Fifty-nine, I'll make it.
I think Gordy might be on the line if he wanted to bring up the Mills thing.
Okay, before we do that, was, is the, is the auditor on here? I see Brett, Brenda, are you, I see you're on, I don't know if you're paying attention or if this is your.
Yes, yes, I'm, I'm here. Yeah, I was trying to unmute, but I was clicking the wrong button, sorry. Now I got in about quarter after 12 today, I apologize, I missed this morning's meeting.
Okay.
Okay.
I just wanted to give you an opportunity as far as what, you know, I'm, I'm happy that you were able to be aware as far as that, you know, we're gonna be opening the courthouse tomorrow with the understanding that it's up to individual departments and electeds as far as what you're, what you're gonna do or your policies or what. I mean, if you don't mind sharing, what is, what is your plan for, because you're, in this building, you're the probably number one desired destination in this courthouse right now. You're a destination.
It wouldn't, yeah, that's hard to believe, Dave. Well, I only want three in the lobby, there's not a six-foot distancing. If you go more than that, I don't think you can have six-foot distancing, even though I was told that my occupancy level is eight for that lobby at 50%. 16, man, I'll tell you, that's been a lot in there. Eight people, there's no way you can have the social distancing. So it's gonna be three people, not counting the veteran service office when, and they're gonna have to wait in the hall. And so I have a few questions, you're opening all of the doors, right?
I believe so, yes.
Up for yours.
Okay.
For your door, your door is up to you.
Well.
Doing first come, first served.
I don't have the time now to keep up on what's coming in through email and phone calls in the mail. There is absolutely no way I'm gonna be able to make appointments. I mean, you don't understand, we're probably three to four weeks behind. And we have been busting our tails and working overtime and multiple people working the counter whenever somebody's at lunch. It's, it's absolutely been horrendous this past year. So there's, if you're referring that I might consider setting up appointments. Respectfully, I'm not saying this to be snarky, that's a joke.
So, Brenda, do you, for everybody sitting outside, do you need, or standing outside, do you need something on the floor? A piece of tape or something laid down so that people can queue up?
That's not my decision, there's only gonna be three come in that door. I am not in charge of the building, Gordy and you guys are.
Right, but I'm still asking like how you want it from your perspective, other than, you know, three people in the door. You want people queuing up, you're not gonna do tickets or anything, I guess that would be an appointment.
I don't have a machine to do tickets because I didn't have at least a week to get a machine ordered or something, I, seriously. I was like, okay, we're gonna open tomorrow. So, you know, if somebody has a numbering machine and they want to use it, I'll be happy to do that. But I don't really think that's gonna work very well either, but I will try it. I'm open to any, you know, I'm, I'm game to try something, that's what I'll say. It's, it's just kind of like, wow, okay.
You can't yell through a door and they're not coming out, I don't see how a numbering machine would work.
You've got the thing inside to turn the number outside.
No, no, the only way I see.
Right.
Putting some black tape on the ground and you stand.
I don't know what the plan is.
Don't come out if somebody walks out.
Well, that's the thing is, you know, I don't know if I'm gonna need to have my door open so that somebody can see when somebody walks out. If somebody's at recording, that's gonna, you know, that's one of the three. And I'm just hoping everybody's respectful, so here's a question for you guys. What happens, which it's gonna happen, if I get more than three people in here and I try to get them removed? And they won't leave.
Call the sheriff.
Seriously, and he's gonna tell me to call the city because I'm in the city, the sheriff doesn't have jurisdiction here.
Sheriff doesn't have jurisdiction in this building?
Nope.
No, we're in the city.
Nope.
The post office is an example of the way it might work. They do have marks on the outside of the main enclosure there. And, oh, I've only been there maybe three times since this all happened, but so far people have been respectful. They wait.
And then they move forward.
The next person can go in and they just.
Well, that's good.
Hey, Brenda, all you have to do is, is tell them if you're not following my rules, I'm shutting the door and locking it and you're not gonna get served.
Wait, the crowd will. That's right.
Well, that's true, but here's the other thing. Many of the people don't understand that we're independently elected officials and you can ask Commissioner Sodder, let me shut my door just a moment.
Oh, this is gonna real, understanding Brenda, you're, this is a, this is a live public meeting.
But what I'm, I'm not saying, I get that, Dave, but what I'm saying is people don't understand that, like the assessor, the clerk and the auditor and treasurer are independently elected officials, a lot of people do not. I won't say everyone. And so the first thing they do is call a county commissioner to try to get you guys to make a shape up.
Right.
Just to be blunt. So if I go doing that and I can lock the door, I can, but your phones are gonna ring too.
We know, they ring already, they've been ringing for a year.
Yeah, you know, you, you do what you need to do out of my control.
But, but if you're having issues, you can threaten them and they say, well, we'll call the county commissioner, say the county commissioner's agreed with me that if, if people aren't following the rules, I have to lock the door, the liability, sorry.
Yeah, I, I, yeah, I'm.
Let's, let's assume positive intent and it's people, I think the vast majority of people are going to be respectful and are going to.
I think I need to get your permits for the courthouse open so I can get first one in line.
All right, well then don't you be the one.
Well, licensing doesn't open until 8:30. My staff works eight to five, licensing's eight thirty to four thirty.
Okay.
And don't you be using your position to gain favor.
Like if I was using my position to gain favor, my paperwork would already be notarized and turned in for.
You should have notarized your paperwork and done that a while ago.
What kind of notary do you need, Dan?
What's that?
What do you need for a notary?
Uh, we bought a car in Oregon and they did all the paperwork and we, they submitted it to you, but the signatures aren't notarized. So they enter office that down to me and then I'm gonna take them somewhere to get them notarized and turn it back in.
You take it to Riverview, but if we're open, that's, see, that's the problem right here is that's why we're behind. And, you know, first off, I want to say, it came back to me from one of my staff that was listening in this morning that you were concerned about how it was gonna affect my office, I truly appreciate that, I'm not trying to be a smart aleck right now, I'm just like but I really truly appreciate that, you know, how it's going to affect my office and that you wanted to talk to me, I really truly appreciate that. So part of the reason, back to my question to you, Dan, was when people come in, we can look at their driver licenses and we can verify who they are, we can certify their signatures. When we are closed to the public, we can't do that.
Right, well, that's where I was going with Jake, where he was saying, I'm using my power, I'm like, no, I could have just called up there and said, no, this is me and probably got it through. But I wanted all of the same regulations that the masses were following and not.
Well, and here's the other thing. When we're close to the public, DOL doesn't want us certifying signatures, like people that come to the courthouse and go out there or something, they don't want us certifying signatures. Now, once we open to the public tomorrow, we'll be able to do that. But even if you'd have done it, we couldn't, you know, Heather, I could have notarized it for you, but the girls, none of us could have, I say the girls, because that's all I have working in licensing. We couldn't have, you know, certified it for you.
Well, I think we could probably, if we're gonna be that busy, Carl, the commissioners can take a vote and, and vote to add another FTE by the name of Sodder to your staff tomorrow, he can come help out if you need it.
You know what?
Security.
We could have an extra person, but it takes a while to get up to speed and to be able to even log into a state DOL computer, but that's a nice thought, Dan, thank you.
You're gonna be a sergeant-at-arms.
Yeah, that's fine.
So I just, I don't know what you're.
You can think about it as seeing if Bob wants some posse in the building just to maintain order. I don't think it's needed, but if it comes down to it. I don't think it's needed, but if it comes down to it, that's.
Yeah, I would say we'll deal with it if we need to. I'm not gonna assume that. Just like we would have, I'm sure you've had difficult people, as we all have.
Oh, yeah.
And you get your fair share because you, there is definitely more people run through your office than, more public run through your office than anybody else, probably the rest of us put together, but we've all had some special people before and.
Yes, exactly. And I've had to call enforcement. I've had to call city before and it's not a pleasant thing. I've had to have people removed. And, um, I don't understand why people have to act like that. I really don't, but there are people out there, like you say, Dave, that, um, you know, just seem to think that's the behavior they need to display.
Right.
So, um.
I will, I will have a discussion today before I leave with the sheriff and just give him a heads up, because we haven't actually had an interaction with him. And, you know, Bob's always been really good about if there's a, if there's a concern about, you know, when we've had public hearings and stuff where we're expecting it could be contentious. He's always made sure that there's officers available in the building or maybe posse member, something. And I think that's a good idea tomorrow for the opening. Just again, I, I don't think you're gonna have any trouble, but I don't think it's unreasonable to have concerns about that. And I don't want to speak for the sheriff, but I suspect he'll, he'll, uh, make sure that there's, um, that you got some backup.
Okay. Well, that's, that's nice. And, you know, they have come up, you know, before, until city got here, when there was a problem. But I do truly appreciate you guys being concerned about how it's going to affect my office. And I am just, my, my flip comment about that's not my problem. About the hallway, the thing of it is, I'm gonna have my hands full with my own office. And you got, it's been made very clear to me in the past that the building outside and inside is your responsibility. So, um, I guess I'm gonna play on that card.
Yeah, no, you're right.
I didn't mean to be flip. I was just like, oh my goodness. So.
Okay. Well, good luck tomorrow. And I will be, like, if you seriously get somebody, you know, like, I'm, I'm gonna call the commissioners. You just, I'll have my phone on. You just dial it for them and I'll talk to them.
I'll just say, go for it. You need the number?
Yeah. You know, really, pretty good.
Yeah, but I mean, it's, it is funny that, and I'm sure through the years, Dave, you've gotten plenty of calls in the different electives. And, um, a lot of people just don't understand that we're not your employees.
Right. Oh, I know, I know.
Yeah.
Okay. Well, thank you. And good luck tomorrow.
Well, yeah, and good luck with you guys monitoring how many people are in the building.
I know, we will. It'll be okay.
Just come to my office. Okay. Thank you very much.
Thanks, Brenda.
Do we want to reach out to Gordy to have him put dates on the floor every six feet? All the way down the hall and down the steps?
Her and then maybe just outside the hall for, um, treasurer and just outside the hall for the assessor.
Yeah, I mean, I would anyway, just since you're there with.
Yeah.
With some papers taped, you might as well handle it.
Yeah.
That would probably be wise. I don't know that the rest of the offices are gonna get stampeded, but hers will.
Well, we gotta pay our taxes here shortly.
Yeah, they're gonna start coming in.
Mr. Chairman, if there's nothing else for the agenda, I would make a motion to adjourn.
Second?
I will second.
You have a motion and a second to adjourn the regular meeting? We have no workshop scheduled this week, which seems shocking.
I think we've given them too much work.
I know.
Even come up for.
Yeah, that's what I was saying. I got other things to bring up.
No, no.
Cause there's way too much on the plate already.
Already, so, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion passed. We are.
Thank you, everyone who's been listening on the phone all day.
Yes.